Have there been a motion?
No, he just asked the ones. Did you put that in the form of a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. Okay. Second it, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We have two other items that need to be added to our agenda. The Commission on School Accreditation met yesterday to make a determination as to whether an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District. Based on the resolution received from the Commission, the State Board of Education will now need to hear the report and make a determination as to whether indeed there is an extreme emergency in the Jackson Public School District. And so at this time, I would entertain motions to also amend the agenda to include item number four, is what it should be on the agenda, "Report on the Existence of an Extreme Emergency Situation Regarding the Safety, Security, and Educational Interest of the Children Now Enrolled in the Jackson Public School District." And we would need to add an item number five, "Discussion and Action Request for the Need to Declare a State of Emergency in the Jackson Public School District." So I would entertain a motion that we add those two items to the agenda.
Chairman, I move to add them to the agenda, but can we move them up? Is it possible to move them up to one and two instead of four and five?
Yes, if the board so desires.
My motion is to put it first.
All right, your motion is to add them to the agenda and put them first, okay? That is the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Bailey, second. Okay, all in favor of adding these two items to the agenda and moving them up on the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right. We do have our recognition ceremony, and let's... Dr. Benton, our first person is John Banks from Coziesco High. Is that yours? Is that your first one also, Coziesco High School?
Let me give you a little background information about the awards that we will be presenting today, if you will. Today's honor... Oh, a little bit closer?
...with the live streaming, so just bear with us a little bit.
Okay. Today's honorees represent some of the best and brightest teachers from across the state of Mississippi, and we will also be recognizing the Employee of the Month for the month of September. The work of our first group of honorees has earned national recognition, which should make each of us in this room today very, very proud. They are the 2017 state finalists for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching Program. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching is the highest recognition that a kindergarten through 12th grade mathematics or science teacher may receive in the United States. Up to 108 teachers are recognized each year. The Presidential awardees receive a certificate signed by the President of the United States. They receive a trip to Washington and a financial award of $10,000 if recognized at this national level. Our awardees serve as exemplars for their colleagues across the state in terms of instruction and quality of instruction in mathematics and science, and they also are an inspiration for their colleagues. Teachers, as I call your name today, if you'll go to the front of the room, Dr. Wright and Ms. Altman will be standing at the front and will recognize you at that time. Our first honoree is Mr. John Banks. Did Mr. Banks make it? Oh, great. Mr. Banks, if you'll go to the front of the room. Mr. Banks is a former physics teacher, retired now, from Coziesco High School. He is a 30-year veteran teacher, and Mr. Banks says that he really enjoys sharing the wonders of the science world with his students, and he hopes to get the opportunity to represent Mississippi at the national level. When thinking about this honor that he received and the process and filling out the application, he said that it was a tremendous professional development opportunity for him. Just going through that process improved his skills and his craft and made him a better teacher. Mr. Banks, thank you for submitting that application, but more importantly, thank you for your 30 years of service to the children across the state of Mississippi.
I had 32 seconds.
No, I did not.
I just want to say that it's been a great journey. I wish I had my lab coat. I've been in nine schools, I've had 20 principals, 2,900 students, and it's been a wonderful journey. But the greatest privilege has been teaching the children. The biggest challenge has been administrators. They are just unbelievable. I've had 20, and I've had two which I would call eight. But the kids have been wonderful, most part the parents have been all over the state of Mississippi. And I could say this before all of you now that I never thought I'd ever say, I was born in Memphis, but now I can say I'm from Mississippi. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Our next honoree is Shay Kennisberger. She teaches 11th and 12th grade, pre-calculus, AP Calculus, AP Calculus BC, differential equations, and trigonometry. Some really advanced classes at the Mississippi School for Mathematics and Science. And she is joined today by her administrator from MSMS, Dr. McConnell. Shay has been teaching for 11 years, and she believes that engagement is the key to meaningful discourse in the classroom, and building a relationship with students is essential in order to be an effective teacher, and she lives that out each and every day in her classroom. She said that she's honored to have a chance to represent Mississippi on a national level, and more importantly, she's proud to be a Mississippi teacher. We are thrilled to have you teaching the boys and girls at MSMS, and thank you so much for your service.
And she said, "Oh, you must have everything in line. You must know exactly what you're doing. You've done this for, you know, over a decade." And I looked at her and I said, "Wow, you don't know me at all. You don't know me at all. I'm always reflecting on things I can change to make things better for students, to improve learning, always wanting to learn." And I think if we can motivate our students to be lifelong learners, that is very, very effective for them. So, in the words of John Dewey, "Education is not a preparation for life. Education is life." And so that's what I believe. But thank you very much. I'm very honored to be here. I forgot to mention my administrators that are here. I have my executive director. Awesome support, and let me actually have a chance to learn new opportunities and venture out and go places to learn, which I'm thankful for their support.
Our next honoree is Karen Lindsay, a 7th grade Algebra I, 8th grade Compacted Math, and 8th grade Geometry teacher at Germantown Middle School in Madison County. Karen has been teaching for 13 years. She believes that impactful mathematics learning can take place in an environment that is fun, engaging, and reflective of the world that the children live in each and every day. She said that receiving this honor really makes her excited, but more importantly, it challenges her to be better every day in her classroom, to make sure that she's seeking out those powerful mathematics activities and supports for the students that she serves. Her goal is to make sure that they can be the best that they can be. Karen, we thank you for what you do each and every day for the boys and girls in Madison County.
And then my principal, Chris Parrott, who has been so supportive of me. Teaching can take place anywhere, and often it's not in our classroom, and the students will say, "Ms. Lindsay, do you have Mr. Parrott's permission for us to be doing this?" And I'm like, "Yes, I do." He completely supports me and allows me to teach them anywhere, anyway, and we have a great time. And I just say, "Thank you so much. Such an honor to receive this recognition."
Our final teacher to be honored today is Michelle Robinson. Michelle is also from Madison County. She teaches at Madison Central High School. At Madison Central, she teaches AP Chemistry and several Project Lead the Way courses, which include Principles of Engineering, Digital Electronics, Engineering Design and Development. And she teaches those courses to 10th, 11th, and 12th graders there. She's been teaching in the profession for 15 years. She said that she strives every day to inspire students to reach beyond what they think is possible and to become self-motivated, critical thinkers, and problem solvers. She's excited, too, to be recognized for this honor as a representative of our state, and she hopes that her selection will inspire students and colleagues to know that they, too, can be where she is today. And she's determined to make sure that she shares her knowledge and expertise with others. Thank you for what you do, Michelle, and we're proud to recognize you today. month was excellent teamwork, and today's honoree exhibits that each and every day. Today, we recognize Verna Covington. Ms. Covington is an Accounting Specialist Senior in the Office of Elementary Education and Reading. In that role, she manages several budgets and coordinates a number of tasks, including contracts, requisitions, and just anything and everything that could come up on any given day. And you see her smiling because she knows that is true. And she embraces each responsibility with enthusiasm, determination, and professionalism. Despite the many demands on her time, she manages to keep everyone smiling and focused on the task at hand. No matter how many things they're juggling, she keeps them focused. Many appreciate her for the efficient way she manages the elementary office and for the personal attention that she gives them to solve problems. She focuses on building strong relationships with her colleagues, and she's dedicated to providing that service to them and to stakeholders across the state, quite frankly, when they call. But one way that she exhibits that servant's heart every day is when something comes up, she doesn't just call or wait for somebody to come to her, she puts her feet into it. She gets up, she gets whatever material she needs to have gathered, and she goes and directly interfaces with her colleagues, and she sits down like a teacher, and she walks them through a process to make sure that not only do they understand it, they know why it's in place, and we get to a quality product at the end. We appreciate her for that. When you think about Verna, you know that she's been here at the department a number of years, and she has a wealth of knowledge, and we appreciate and value that, and she's willing to share that with others. She's also willing to roll up those sleeves and get in there and do whatever it takes to get the job done. She takes her job as more than a job. It's a calling, and we know that because of the way that she acts every single day. If you can't tell, we love Verna. We value her, we appreciate her, and she truly exemplifies teamwork and what it means to have a servant's heart and be a member of the MDE team. So, Verna, thank you so much.
and a report from the chair, but we're going to skip that this morning in the interest of time and move right into the next item, which would be the two items we added to the agenda this morning.
My name is Raina Anderson Lee. I'm Special Assistant Attorney General. I will be advising the State Board of Education today in this matter. We will be following specific procedures, which will be explained, and I will be keeping the time.
Okay, if you'd move on in and get your seat quickly, please, so we can proceed. Okay, Ms. Lee, are you ready?
Yes, we're ready.
All right, we've come to item number four, which has been moved up to the top of the agenda. This meeting will proceed per the State Board of Education approved accreditation audit procedures. As this matter is of utmost importance, we want the meeting to proceed in an orderly and respectful manner. Make sure those of you who've come into the room that your cellphones are turned on silent. We want to make certain that everyone has their appropriate amount of time. To begin, we will hear from the Office of Accreditation. They will present for 40 minutes. Following the Office of Accreditation's presentation, district representatives, which shall include but are not limited to the superintendent and the school board chair, will be allowed to address the board. While the district may be represented by council, only district employees and our school board members may address the board during the 40-minute period allowed for the district to present their evidence pertinent to this matter. The time may not be delegated to anyone else. And board members, we ask that you do not interrupt presentations by the Office of Accreditation or the district during their allotted 40 minutes. Following the district's presentation, the board will be allowed to ask any clarifying questions of either party. After questions, the board will entertain any closing arguments from the legal representative for the district, should they desire, and then the board will entertain any closing arguments from the legal representative for the Office of Accreditation. This will be allotted 10 minutes for each group. So we will now begin with the presentation from the Office of Accreditation. Are you ready to start? Okay. Dr. Vanfor.
Good morning. In accordance with Accreditation Policy 5.0 of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards 2016, the Commission on School Accreditation directed the Office of Accreditation to conduct an investigative audit of the Jackson Public School District. The audit was conducted September 6th of 2016 through July 31st of 2017. The demographic information for the Jackson Public School District is shown on the screen. The evaluation procedures included a comprehensive evaluation of all of the accreditation standards and accountability requirements that are outlined in the accountability document as well as State Board of Education policies. Due to the size of the district, it took nearly 11 months to complete this process. On the screen, you'll see the rationale for the consideration of the state of an emergency in the Jackson Public School District. That is based on serious violations of accreditation standards, state law, and federal law, the failure to sustain a safe school climate, inappropriate standards of governance, and a pattern of poor academic performance. Prior to this investigative audit, the MDE conducted an unannounced audit in the district in April of 2016. That was part of the ongoing legislative audits that were being conducted in the C, D, and F-rated districts. That included a limited number of accreditation standards and accountability requirements. The timeline for this is projected on the screen. As you know, all of the accreditation standards that are in the document are based on federal law, state law, State Board policy, or policy set forth by the Commission on School Accreditation. In addition, each program office at MDE has a monitoring instrument or a checklist that is used to evaluate the process standards. The limited audit that was conducted in April was a sample of 22 schools that was based on the feeder patterns for the district and performance classification. The limited audit began on April 4th, ended on April 22nd, and the MDE released the findings on June 15th. At the release of the report on June 15th in 2016, the district was allowed 30 days to address the findings of the report, and following that, submit an official response to the audit findings. At the time that the preliminary report was released, the district was in violation of Accreditation Policy 2.1 and 21 of the 29 process standards that were evaluated. Following the district's response, the Office of Accreditation cleared two process standards and a portion of another. So when the issues of noncompliance were added to the district's accreditation record summary, that left the district in violation of Accreditation Policy 2.1 and 19 of the process standards. And even though one of those was cleared following the limited audit, they are now noncompliant with one of those standards. On August 16th of 2016, the Office of Accreditation made a report to the Commission on School Accreditation in accordance with Policy 2.5, which outlines eight of the most egregious areas in which we can recommend a change in the district's accreditation status. At that time, the rationale to downgrade the district from accredited to probation was based on violations with Process Standard 20, which was related to instructional practices, Process Standard 14 for graduation requirements, Process Standards 29, 30, and 31, that all are related to a safe and orderly school climate, and Accreditation Policy 2.1 related to the requirement for reporting accurate data to the MDE. So on August 16th of 2016, the Commission unanimously approved the downgrade of the district's status to probation and directed the MDE at that time to conduct the audit. Once the district was downgraded, they were required to submit a corrective action plan within 60 days. If you recall, they submitted the corrective action plan, and when the Office of Accreditation brought that before the board in November of 2016, we recommended that the board not approve the plan because it didn't adequately address the issues of noncompliance that were on the district's record. We allowed the district an additional month to revise the plan and brought the plan back to the State Board in December, and it was approved. Throughout this entire 18 months, we're going to walk through an 18-month timeline from the beginning of the legislative audit in April of 2016 to current. We consistently messaged to the district the consequences for failure to implement the corrective actions and to clear the deficiencies on record, and that if the deficiencies were not resolved, the district could be subject to having its accreditation withdrawn or be in the position that we are today, where we are having to determine if an extreme emergency does exist. Again, in August of 2016, we expressed significant concerns to the district mainly regarding the deficiencies that were related to instructional practices, graduation requirements, and a safe and orderly school climate. On numerous instances, we pointed out to the district the urgency of addressing those. However, we do not feel that at any point the district demonstrated the sense of urgency needed to resolve the critical issues that we had put before them. We encourage the district to prioritize their task and to focus on clearing the deficiencies that were related to these areas of concern, rather than trying to clear process standards in the sample that were nonrelated to the rationale for the downgrade for the state of an emergency. Prior to the completion of the audit, all of the findings on the district records were for the sample of the 22 schools. And so throughout this process, when we explained to the district, we told the district that they should apply the corrective actions to all schools within the district, not just the schools in the sample. And although the district cleared some of the deficiencies noted in the sample, during the full investigative audit, auditors reported similarities in the findings for the remaining schools that were not part of the sample. During this time, the MDE was also charged with providing technical assistance and assisting the district with the implementation of implementing their corrective action plan while at the same time conducting this full investigative audit in all 52 schools, or 58 schools that received performance classifications. So when I refer to technical assistance, we provided the district with information and instructions on how to work toward correcting their deficiencies. We provided the district with a technical assistance request form, and we have documented every technical assistance request that has been made by the district. The only professional development or technical assistance request that we have denied is when the district asks for the same assistance multiple times due to the changeover in staffing. We also informed the district that we would not provide professional development in areas that were being provided statewide because they could participate in the statewide opportunities. We did note that the district did fail in some instances to utilize the opportunity to receive the statewide professional development. In February of 2017, we had to have some conversations with the district leadership regarding their request for follow-up visits, because in addition to the technical assistance and implementation of the CAP and investigating the audit, we also were charged with conducting follow-up visits. So in many cases, the district had asked us to come back and conduct follow-up visits that they were not prepared for. So when we got there to conduct the follow-up visit, they did not demonstrate compliance. And so in February 2017, we asked the district to ensure that if they called us back for a follow-up visit, that they were prepared for the follow-up visit and that they knew that they had cleared the deficiencies related to that particular standard. So at that time, it was agreed upon that the agency would not respond to any request for follow-up visits unless we received the request from the superintendent or the interim superintendent or his designee, because we were getting requests in multiple program offices from multiple offices within the district, and so we needed to streamline that process. On August 31st, 2017, we provided the district with the onsite investigative audit report. So this report is being made to the State Board today as well as to the Commission yesterday in accordance with Mississippi Code 3717612B, based on the findings outlined in that report. So the code section is projected on the screen. The State Board must determine if an extreme emergency exists in the district that jeopardizes the safety, security, and educational interest of the children enrolled in the district, and again, determine whether or not that emergency situation is believed to be related to serious violations of accreditation standards, state and federal law, the failure to sustain a safe school climate, the inappropriate standards of governance, as well as a pattern of poor academic performance. The onsite investigative audit report that you received indicates that the district is out of compliance with Accreditation Policy 2.1 and 24 of the process. And twenty-four of the process, twenty-four of the thirty-two process standards, uh, as well as multiple state and federal laws. Um, please note that there is a significant overlap between the findings that were reported in the April two thousand and sixteen report. And the current investigative audit report, um, specifically, the district is still, um, non-compliant with accreditation policy, uh, two point one. And they are still, um, non-compliant with eighteen of the same process standards that they were non-compliant with, um, in the original report. So as previously mentioned, um, the district was allowed thirty days to respond to the findings of the legislative audit report. Before those findings were placed on the district's accreditation record summary. Um, in October of two thousand and fourteen, the board approved the accreditation audit procedures. Um, and those procedures do not require that the district be allowed thirty days to respond to this audit report. Since the recommendation is to determine whether or not, or the charge before you is determined, to determine whether or not. An extreme emergency exists in the district. So therefore, um, the district has been made aware of the concerns, um, as early as April of two thousand and sixteen. And they've had nearly eighteen months to address and correct the issues that are outlined in the report. Therefore, um, um, before you today saying that the district has had notice and they've had opportunity. So I, um, want to clarify that in this audit, we went back and reviewed the same standards. That were reviewed in the preliminary audit report. So their red font that is in your audit report that you received will, I mean, it indicates the findings that were noted in April of two thousand and sixteen. And were still noted again in the investigative audit report. Um, now, there were a couple of areas particularly like, uh, the facilities where we did not go back. And audit those same schools in the sample because they are, the district was already had a very specific list of findings. So those appeared in red and anything that had been cleared, um, was a strike through. Uh, we, please refer to accreditation policy, um, two point five of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards that's projected on the screen. Um, these are the areas which are concerned, uh, that are considered to be the most serious of violation standards. And the next slide, I just want to point out that the district is in violation of seven of those. Reporting false information, um, operating day-to-day based on board policies, uh, appropriate standards of governance, graduation requirements, test security procedures. Um, federal programs specifically dealing with E S E A and, um, I D E A. And the standards that, uh, deal with safe and orderly schools. Based on the most recent report from the Office of the State Auditor, the district has a letter of warning in the eighth area that's listed on the screen. Which is related to financial accountability requirements or, uh, fixed assets of accountability. The district has also failed to implement a coherent, cohesive, high-quality instructional management system. That clearly defines the academic goals necessary for improving student achievement as evidenced by a pattern of a poor academic performance. Uh, the Commission on School Accreditation met in a special call meeting on Wednesday, September the thirteenth. And determined that these serious violations do jeopardize the safety, security and educational interests of the children enrolled in the district. Um, each of the twenty-four non-compliant standards have an impact on the educational interest of the students in the district. Um, however, this presentation will focus only on those violations believed to have the greatest impact on student achievement. Um, and the safety, security and educational interest of the student in the district. I want to emphasize that the seven areas previously highlighted or overview on the screen. Um, do have the greatest impact on the children that are enrolled in the district. Um, I'm not going to spend time talking about things that are administrative or, uh, procedural. And when we talk about, um, some of the, the process standards throughout, I'm sure you noticed in your report. That the district may have implemented, um, a portion of the corrective action plan. Um, an example would be they amended a board policy to comply with, um, a local board policy to comply with. A state board policy or a state statute, however, in many instances, they failed to implement that. So throughout, um, some of the findings, you'll see that. Um, we'll begin with the instructional management system. Uh, as the educational leader of the district, the interim superintendent failed to ensure the implementation of an instructional management plan. That clearly defines the academic, uh, goals necessary for improving student achievement in the district. This is a direct violation of state law which states that the superintendent principals and teachers are required to enforce. The course of study that's prescribed by the State Board of Education. Um, the district provided a board policy regarding instructional management, uh, system, but they failed to produce the board minutes. Indicating that the instructional management system had been approved. The classroom level or the tier-one instruction in all non-compliant schools failed to provide sufficient opportunities for students to be. Identified for tier-two or tier-three instructional supports. Lack of identification and intervention at the school level causes students to fail to meet the Mississippi College and Career readiness standard. The following includes, but is not limited to some, some, some of the concerns that were noted during the classroom observations. Teachers failed to actively engage students in learning, utilize instructional time effectively, maintain control and discipline in the classrooms. Use questioning and discussion techniques to promote higher worth thinking, differentiate instruction appropriately for students. Demonstrate a deep knowledge of the content area, provide a productive learning environment. Teacher lesson plans failed to reflect the content or the instruction that was observed. It, uh, they failed to include the activities, assignment and assessments under the curriculum frameworks and substrands. Failed to include any tiered interventions. In some instances, teachers failed to provide lesson plans at all. Uh, some of the lesson plans provided were for the wrong content area. Uh, students were also observed in the hallways during instructional time. They arrived late to class and they were on cell phones and iPads during instructional time. Earlier this month, um, we received a report from a parent that sat in her, uh, child's class at one of the high schools. And reported back to the Office of Accreditation that her observations while at the school mirrored the, um, findings of the report. In the areas of early childhood, um, and, uh, the kindergarten programs, schools failed to document assistant teacher. Education qualifications, um, to document professional development provided to assistant, um, teachers, teachers and administrators. They failed to conduct hearing and vision screenings on all kindergarten children within the first days of enrollment. Uh, uh, they failed to plan evaluations of children's progress using the M D E standards for social and emotional development. Uh, they failed to provide parents with the sixteen-seventeen student handbook. They failed to schedule the number of, uh, parent-teacher conferences that were required. And they failed to provide the appropriate amount of, uh, required amount of instructional time. The lesson plans in pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, um, consistently, uh, failed and adequately failed to address the current instructional standards. That are required by the M D E. The overall collection of each library failed to represent a real balance, broad range of current learning media, including books in print. Up-to-date instructional technology, periodicals, uh, teacher resources and equipment. Uh, despite the district's attempt to implement the corrective action plan in all seven of the high schools. The schools still failed to ensure that all graduating seniors of the sixteen-seventeen school year met some requirements for graduation. The M D E reviewed records for fourteen hundred and four graduating seniors, um, during the school year sixteen-seventeen. In all of the seven high schools in the district, each of the seven high schools lacked the documentation to verify that all graduating seniors had earned the. A number of Carnegie units, um, and/or met, uh, that are passed all of the four end-of-course subject area exams. Um, as required or either, uh, met one of the options in lieu of passing the test. Uh, the M D E reviewed all senior records that were provided by the district. Um, at the time, so when we entered the district, we asked the, the school to provide us with. All of the cumulative folders and permanent records of the, the students that, um, were seniors. And we reviewed those and you have the, the detailed findings by school in each of your, uh, reports that were provided to you. Um, however, um, the district allowed eighty-six students who did not meet the minimum number of graduation requirements. Um, to graduate related to the, uh, Carnegie units and sixty-three students, um, that did not pass the end-of-course. Uh, subject area test or meet one of the options in lieu of. Schools also substituted courses that were not allowable in lieu of the required courses for graduation. Uh, one school failed to follow the appropriate substitutions for the international, uh, baccalaureate program. In addition, the Office of Accreditation received numerous complaints from parents, um, that were approaching, uh, time for the graduation. This was within a week or two weeks of graduation, um, the complaints indicated that the district, um, had, had failed to provide them adequate notice. That their student had not met one of the graduation requirements and would not be able to participate, um, in graduation exercises. Or that they had had a, uh, test score invalidated or, um. I mean, just that they wouldn't be able to participate. Uh, in December, the, the board adopted a policy that addresses the changing of students' grades. However, as the end of the sixteen-seventeen school year came to a close, the Office of Accreditation received reports from teachers in the district stating. That they were being pressured by administrators to change grades in order to pass students. These teachers claimed that they were being threatened with letters of reprimand if they failed to comply. Uh, one of the teachers claimed that the building level administrator told teachers that the school had a maximum number. Of students per team and grade that they were allowed to fail and any failures beyond that would be overwritten. Additional concerns at the seven high schools that, um, caused us to question the fidelity and the integrity of the implementation of the grading policies. Um, include, but are not limited to, a student, uh, may have failed the course the first semester, but they didn't repeat the course the second semester. They received credit recovery during their senior year for a course that they actually failed, um, during the ninth or tenth grade. In some cases, students received credit for the same course twice. Opt-out forms were signed up to, um, or at, within two weeks of graduation. Students enrolled in and received credit for courses that the M D E no longer approved. Uh, students that had rigorous schedules missed excessive number of days, um, but yet were a, were able to, um, pass all the courses. Um, for example, one of the records that I reviewed, um, the student, um, had taken English two, three and four. Algebra two, geometry, physical science, U S government, economics and one elective during their senior year. This particular student had a composite score of twelve on the A C T and it was documented that they had missed thirty-nine days of school. Uh, one student failed chemistry in the tenth grade, was allowed to come back and take credit recovery. Their senior year was awarded a grade of seventy-nine in credit recovery, however, we have a state board policy that says no grade higher than a seventy can be issued in credit recovery. Um, the principal signed and dated a permanent record of a student that did not, um, participate in graduation record, uh, exercises. Uh, when we look at, um, student records, cumulative records, permanent folders along that same topic. Uh, for, uh, content that's required in, uh, to be maintained, collected, maintained and disseminated. Mandated by a law in accordance with Mississippi Cumulative Folders and Permanent Records Manual. Uh, we also looked at residency and immunization requirements, so we reviewed records in all fifty-eight schools. If you go back to the maintenance of records for, uh, what's in the manual, forty-one of those schools were non-compliant. Some of the findings, um, that were of concern indicated that records lacked the required course grade information. So a grade was failed to be recorded on the cumulative folder or permanent record. Uh, attendance data was not recorded, uh, with enrollment and withdrawal, withdrawal data, uh, was not recorded. Standardized test data and there were different grades that were recorded in some instances on the cumulative folder in the permanent record. Uh, thirty-five of the fifty-eight schools in the district failed to provide the required immunization documentation. Uh, that residency, thirty-five schools failed to provide residency, twenty-three on immunization. Um, we also received an inquiry from a physician at the University Medical Center related to the increased number of requests. That they were getting from parents in the school for, um, immunization forms. So one of the nurses at U M C, uh, contacted one of the high schools and, um, the staff at the high school told the U M C nurse. That the M D E had re, had seized student records, um, during the audit. So I just want, you know, to inform the board that we did not re-seize any student records while onsite, um, at any of the schools. So during the exit conference, I questioned the superintendent about this and he indicated that, um, they were just requiring that. All parents provide new forms during the registration process for all students because that was the easiest way. Um, to get the immunization records complete and up to date. Based on the M S I S, um, personnel data report for school year sixteen-seventeen, the district reported five thousand two hundred and two employees. Uh, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, tho, of those employees were coded as certified teachers. Um, two hundred and ninety-nine or fifteen percent of those nineteen hundred and seventy-two certified teachers. Employed in the district in sixteen-seventeen did not hold a valid Mississippi teacher license. Or they lacked the proper license or endorsement for the subject that they were teaching. So this is in addition to the hundred and ninety vacancies that the district reported for school years, for school year sixteen-seventeen. Uh, the district failed to comply with test security requirements outlined in appendix F. Uh, the district, uh, test security plan did not contain all required components. Um, the dis, uh, the district test security plan also liked individual school test security plans. Um, during the spring, um, assessment window, the M D E conducted onsite visits in, uh, three of the schools. Um, in one of the schools, the school failed to provide a school test security plan. The principal purposely, um, tried to prevent M D E from viewing all the testing rooms by telling auditors that testing was only occurring, um, in the computer lab. Um, uh, there was a case where secure testing tickets that contained online access for individual students to their online tests. Were left unattended, um, an employee, uh, walked down the hall unattended with an E L A testing booklet. Uh, secure test materials were left unattended in the distribution room. Um, test administrator had electronic device in the testing environment that repeatedly sounded. Um, the school failed to provide students with the appropriate amount of time during statewide testing. In some cases, the students were not provided enough time and in others, they were provided more time than what was allowed. Um, at another school, um, during testing, there were two testing rooms, uh, that did not have, uh, two adults present as required. For at least twenty-four minutes, um, for two minutes, um, where testing occurred in the library, there was no adult in the room. Uh, students were allowed to talk to each other during state, statewide testing. Uh, again, at this school, they prevailed to provide the students with the appropriate amount of time, uh, for, to take the test. Uh, the hall monitor also had electronic, uh, device in the testing area. At the third school, a proctor provided answers to a student during the test. Um, a student was talking on a cellphone, um, during statewide testing. Again, failed to provide students with appropriate amount of time to take the test. Test administrator and proctors were talking amongst themselves during statewide testing. Um, there were multiple, uh, school, the school test coordinator, assistant school test coordinator, multiple test administrators and proctors. That had electronic devices in this, in the testing area. Secure test materials were also, um, left unattended at this school and the students who were not provided the appropriate accommodations during statewide testing. Uh, one school also made a self-report to M D E that they had a missing, uh, E L A writing test book, uh, but test booklet. The data forensic results for the district indicated that six out of seven of the high schools had students who received invalidated test scores. Um, in the four subject areas for extreme similarity and are wrong to write answers that exceeded, um, the threshold. Child find, um, is a federally funded mandated process for identifying, locating and evaluating children who have a disability. Uh, it was established that the district did not have an effective child find process, uh, which resulted in delaying services to students in need. Um, and in some eliminated services for students in need. Uh, both federal and state law require that the district provide students ages three to twenty, um, who reside in Mississippi with the free and appropriate public education. Through the development of an individualized educational, uh, program. Uh, and this, the I P is developed by an appropriate committee and should also include the, the parent. Uh, the district failed to ensure that the development of the I Ps for each students with disabilities. Received specifically designed instruction to meet the students' need. Um, such as I Ps failed to address areas such as student strengths, concerns of the parent, results of most recent evaluations. Academic development and functional needs of the students, descriptions of how the students progress toward meeting annual goals. And the frequency and duration of services, um, and support. So, um, students ages fourteen and older, um, I Ps didn't include appropriate post-secondary goals. Uh, district failed to ensure students with disabilities, um, had an effect, um, an I P in place that denied students access to the services. That met their needs, reevaluations were not conducted in the three-year timeframe, um, extended school. Extended school year documentation, such as eligibility determination and eligibility criteria, was not documented to support that decision on students' IEP. The Office of Special Education looked at 42, I mean, 51 areas, and 42 of the 51 areas that they reviewed had issues of noncompliance. They reviewed 487 records in the district, and in those 487 records had 1,956 individual citations, so that's an average of four violations on each IEP. The district failed to provide evidence that budgets and expenditures for all federal programs under ESEA were allocable, reasonable, and necessary, met program intent and purposes, aligned with the approved application and amendments on file at MDE, and were obligated and liquidated in accordance with the approved plan. The district failed to provide evidence that contracts and agreements were made in accordance with applicable federal and state law and local requirements. So, in June of 2017, the MDE Office of Federal Programs directed the district to refund questioned cost in the amount of $535,417, and the district did refund those costs in July of 2017. As of August the 31st of 2017, the district had a total of over $1.8 million in FY16 funds that had not yet been expended, although no federal physical requirement have been violated to date pertaining to these funds. I just want to note that if the district fails to obligate these funds by September the 30th of 17, and liquidate by December the 30th of 17, that nearly $2 million of funds will be reverted back to the USDOE. School safety, the crisis management plans didn't comply with MDE requirements, and there was a lengthy review of the school safety concerns in the report that indicated that MDE is not the only agency that has been concerned with the safety violations in the school district. Transportation, you know, we continue to receive complaints from parents that buses are not picking up the students and, on time in the mornings, and that they're not getting to school by the start of the instructional day. We still need to have an initial inspection of 25 buses in the district, but despite the numerous requests, we were to evaluate those buses, they were not provided. The district has also failed to provide facilities that are safe and secure environment. Throughout the investigative audit report, we provided the facility reports to the district, but only three of the schools have cleared since December of 2016. We went back in June of 2017 and conducted a follow-up visit in 11 schools based on the district request, but only one school cleared. Just briefly to highlight some of the governance issues, state law requires that the management responsibilities of the district superintendent are required by state and federal law, but the superintendent has failed to provide effective educational leadership in those areas. We did, as mentioned earlier, discover that many of the findings from the investigative audit report are consistent with the findings from the legislative report, and the overlap was within 18 process standards in which the district had had 18 months. Board policies failed to serve as the basis of operation in the district, and board members have failed to effectively perform its duties in accordance with applicable law. As you all are aware, prior to completion of the investigative audit, JPS had a number of board members to resign, resulted in a three-member board, and they could not conduct business because they did not have a quorum. As of today, the mayor and city council have appointed one additional member to the board. Accreditation Policy 2.1, we've highlighted that a number of times with reporting data. I just want to emphasize that all the data that is in MCIS is reported by the district, and it's the district's responsibility to ensure that that data is true and accurate, and that they have the documentation on file to verify that. Finally, we'll talk about the pattern of poor academic performance. The onsite investigative report that you received included a five-year history of performance for the district, and that's summarized on the screen. For four years, 2012 through 2015, the district had a performance classification of a D. In 2016, the district's official grade dropped to an F. Four out of seven of its high schools is in the lowest performing 10% of high schools in the state. Over the past five years, the graduation rate in the district has remained below 68%, while the state graduation rate has increased to 82.3%. In 2017, six of the seven high schools dropped more than 10% in math proficiency. Seventeen of the district's elementary schools performed in the lowest 10% of elementary schools in the state, two of those being the lowest two-performing elementary schools statewide. The district also has the lowest performing schools in math and reading proficiency statewide. The district is in the lowest 25% of districts in reading and math proficiency, and the lowest 10% in U.S. History and Science proficiency. The Board has requested and been provided the 2017 preliminary accountability results that were provided to the school district and to the Commission on School Accreditation. I just want to emphasize that despite some of the concerns that have been raised, the preliminary data is not embargoed. We do not have a board policy that says the data is embargoed. When the data was released to the school district, it was only the numerical value. We did not have the cuts. However, if you look at the 2016 baseline cuts that are established and that we are aware of, that the district can determine, you, the district can determine that they will receive, based on the preliminary data, an F for two consecutive years, and that they will have more than 50% of their schools rated an F. And that's based on the 2016 baseline that we already have the cut points for. Again, the baseline for 2017 was not provided because we have to have the final results before those can be determined. In addition to the pattern of poor academic performance, the district consistently fails to meet deadlines in accountability data reviews. In the review of accountability data for the 2016 accountability year, the district failed to meet deadlines for senior snapshot verification, full academic year, and demographic review, as well as the review of their preliminary accountability results for 2016. The district in 2016 did not respond to the review of their graduation rate data. In the review of accountability data for 2017, this current year, the district has failed to meet the deadlines for full academic year and demographic review. They did not respond to the review of senior snapshot data. During the review of the graduation data, the district posted some files in advance of the deadline, but other files were posted after the deadline. In addition, districts had from July the 19th through August the 14th of 2017 to update the ACT scores for use in the college and career readiness component in the statewide accountability system. The district contacted the MDE on August the 15th, the day following the deadline, stating that they did not complete this process for the updates, and indicated that they needed an extension for this request. And as you know, the preliminary results are currently under review for 2017, and the appeals are due to the MDE by all districts by September the 28th. However, if the deadlines have already been missed by JPS or any other district that have already been provided and missed, they will not be included in the review. So, in summary, I'll just point you back to the eight areas on the slide. Dr. Malone, if you'll go back, that are the most egregious, and just emphasize that the district is in, or is noncompliant in eight of the seven areas that are outlined in Policy 2.5.2, that would allow the district's withdrawal of accreditation. And we believe that these are the areas that are published in our policy that have the greatest impact on student achievement. And in addition to these seven areas, the district, again, I want to emphasize that they have failed to implement a coherent, cohesive, high-quality instructional management system.
Accreditation's time has lapsed. And now, the Board will hear from representatives from the Jackson Public School District. I have 40 minutes as well, and I will give you a five-minute warning.
Hey, you want to stand up?
But no one can leave out, though.
Okay, we can't leave the room.
Need to have both arguments together.
Back-to-back.
Back-to-back.
See, just as soon as we get the other board member back in here. We're missing one board member.
Right, you may proceed.
Good morning. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for giving us an opportunity to present today. We'd also like to note that we did not receive the 30 school days to respond to the findings as outlined in your procedures. We only had seven days to prepare, and we requested additional time. We just wanted to make that note prior to moving forward into our presentation. First of all, we'd just like to start by outlining our mission. The Jackson Public Schools, an innovative urban district committed to excellence, will provide every student a quality education in partnership with parents and the community. Recently, we revised our goals to adequately address what we felt were major issues within our system, and also to align with our goals of the CAP. So, we, our goals are, we want to increase the academic performance and achievement first and foremost. We want to provide a safe school climate, and of course, maintain fiscal integrity and accountability. And ultimately, our vision is to become a top-ranked learning community that graduates productive, caring citizens who are prepared to succeed in the global society. We think it's extremely important for us to bring some, to bring forth our district profile. We'll reference some things, and we really want this Commission, this Board, to understand the volume of our district. We're the second-largest school district in Mississippi, serving nearly 27,000 students, representing more than 80% of the school-aged children in the state's capital, and the only urban municipality. Our district maintains approximately 5 million square feet of floor space, approximately 2,200 acres, 108 buildings, and 247 portables. We have seven high schools, 12 middle schools, 37 elementary schools, and two special schools comprising the district's 58 school sites. These schools are divided into seven feeder patterns based on the high schools that receive those area students. We have a myriad of choice within our district. We believe that we are first-class as it relates to the amount of choice that exists. We have programs ranging from APAC, which is Advanced Placement. We have arts programs, Ask for More, Base Pair, academic research programs, Career Academies, just to name a few of those programs. And not just in those special schools, but we also have these programs district-wide in many cases. We believe that much of what we just heard, you know, we believe that we are, that much of that was 12 to six months ago, and we are a much different district now than we were at that time. And so, we, why are we a different district? Because we've made some tough decisions and made some changes that we felt need to be made to improve our district and to move it forward. We reorganized our district into four pre-K-12 districts. In the past, I think since probably the inception of our district, we've always been by division. We've been aligned, not vertically, but horizontally as it relates to how we operate it. But we've now divided our district into four sub-zones. We've hired 14 new principals just this year. Principals in probably 24% of our schools are new. We've consolidated schools, something that's not been done, not popular, was not popular, but a decision that we had to make at a savings of over $1 million. So, we are making those, we've made those tough decisions. We repurposed a middle school and turned it into a re-engagement center to address those issues with our students who are overage and undercredit. We created a compliance department. We had compliance, we had people doing compliance in the past, but there was no kind of method or strategy, strategic approach to that. We've created now a compliance department that monitors the execution of the corrective actions and that monitors all of our standards on a daily basis. This is a graphic of the district breakdown. Again, this was board-approved. We worked with Mississippi School Board Association. We did extensive research in looking at how we could better support our students. And so, our district now is divided into four areas, Area 1, 2, 3, and 4. In our area, you can see that the size of the area ranges from about 4,000 students to almost 9,000. We felt, or we know, we've seen already, that this is significantly a better approach to dealing with our district because of the size. And we didn't just make these decisions in isolation, we looked at the data. The Forest Hill feeder pattern had the most challenges. So, it was the, we have seven, so one had to stand alone, and we decided to utilize Forest Hill because of what the data said about that feeder pattern. We are designing, we're making decisions, funding, based on the needs of those specific feeder patterns, of those specific areas, and those area superintendents have the autonomy and the flexibility to do things differently as they see fit according to the needs of their specific feeder pattern. We think that's a major change in our district that will help us as we move forward. The timeline here is extremely important, and we want to spend just a little time talking about the timeline. MDE has gone through the timeline, and we started in April of 2006 with this process, almost 18 months ago. We conduct, a limited audit was conducted, 20 schools were audited, and 22 of the 32 standards were found to be, were found to be in violation. This was conducted over a three-week timeframe. And we want to note here that this audit took about 11 months, this investigative audit, took a period of 11 months. And MDE, of course, downgraded the district accreditation status to probation. The district began to develop a corrective action plan to address those deficiencies. And in this meeting, I can recall sitting in this room on one of the chairs in the back, and there was discussion among the committee about how difficult it would be for a district to go through a corrective action plan and simultaneously go through an investigative audit. So, we are making strides in every area. Are we where we need to be at this point? We think we've made significant progress since the CAP was approved in December. So, these exhibits, we'll reference them throughout the presentation, but because of the short amount of time we have to present, we won't be able to go through all the standards that, all of the information that you've heard. So, we want to make sure that you know that it's not just the standards that we'll cover, but we've addressed everything and we'll be available to answer any questions relative to those other areas. But again, we want to go back to, we believe that the Jackson Public Schools today is vastly different than it was twelve months ago, even eight months ago, especially eighteen months ago. The Jackson Public Schools will demonstrate that an extreme emergency does not exist at this time that jeopardizes the safety, security, and educational interests of students. The Jackson Public School District will demonstrate that we have made significant improvements in the areas of safety, security, transportation, instruction, record-keeping, facilities, teacher, and teacher recruitment since the completion of the limited and investigative audits performed by the MDE. And we'll start again with those standards that have been highlighted, those that are, that would cause or would be reason for a take-home. We've addressed Standard One, one hundred percent of our board policies have been, has been reviewed by the school board. A total of four-hundred-and-fifty-seven of those policies have been reviewed, revised, and developed or deleted. And not only have we revised those policies, but we've put those policies into action. We've started to work on those areas where we had deficiencies. We created a new policy, Policy Procedure IDB on accreditation. It establishes processes and consequences for accreditation deficiencies. When we came into this seat, we realized that we needed to have a sense of urgency. State superintendent talked to us about that and we took the charge. We put forth a sense of urgency and we needed to put some processes in place to ensure that our people understood the sense of urgency. And I go back to the second slide where we talked about the number of people that are in the organization, the size of the organization. Two or three schools, five schools, you know, you can create that, you know, you can scale things in a week or two weeks. When you're talking about five thousand, it's a little different. And so, again, we, we hold people, my hallmark is you have to, people have to be accountable. And if they're not, then we have to make those, those changes that are necessary to get the right people in the space. But this policy goes a long way in doing that. Accreditation Policy IDB and Procedures for Addressing Non-Compliance and Accountability. The district has developed and implemented an internal monitoring and reporting process to ensure compliance with accountability requirements and accreditation standards that include consequences for personnel. So, we have this, this compliance department. We have standard leaders for all thirty-two of the standards. Principals and department heads, CAP facilitators and superintendent are notified in writing if there is a deficiency. The principal, the principal or department heads would have, if there is a deficiency noted, the principal or department head would have five to eight days to correct those deficiencies. If those deficiencies are not corrected, then disciplinary actions are taken, might be a reprimand, suspension, or termination. And the internal compliance team, they're our boots on the ground to support this work. So, they're in schools every day, looking at the standards. When there are issues with the standards, they bring that information back and we have this policy to have, to motivate those individuals to do what needs to be done. Another area, records, Standards Six and Eight, there were extensive comments about residency verification, student records. The Office of Records completed a review and assessment of all two-hundred, two thousand fifteen, sixteen graduate records that are currently archived at the central depository. All two thousand seventeen graduate records were reviewed and verified and the district is presently following the instructions and procedures for record maintenance as prescribed by MDE's manual for direction for records. The district is presently utilizing an internal auditing process for reviewing and evaluating records. The district has an online record checklist inventory system that is used for auditing purposes. And the district has implemented a process for schools outside of the district to request records. Personnel responsible for student records are trained using the MDE manual of instruction, instructional online tutorials. All students have required proofs of residency, birth certificate, immunization certificate on file with internal audits will continue to take place to ensure compliance. I'd also like to note that the Jackson Public School District did not communicate to anyone that records had been seized by MDE. That did not come from our department. And we required parents to bring the residency because we wanted to get it right. This issue was a problem and it was identified. And so, in order for us to ensure that this was properly handled and that we did what was required, we requested those records, not because it was the easiest thing to do, but it was necessary in order to get it right. The parents that have not completed registration have been notified and the issues will be resolved according to the district's procedure. Students that have not reported to school or withdrawn have been reported to the MDE Office of Compulsory Enforcement. We've reviewed board polit, well, Standard Fourteen graduation requirements. You've heard a lot about that, you've seen a lot as it relates to graduation requirements and students being, not, not meeting requirements. We would like to say that our students have met the requirements as outlined by MDE. We believe that there is some differences factually, that there are some issues that exist within the audit and, but we believe that our students are, have met the requirements that are outlined by MDE. We reviewed Board Policy IGB on high school graduation. We reviewed and updated at-a-glance graduation section of the publication, Code of Student Conduct and Handbook. And we provided the district personnel, students, and parents to community stakeholders. We've conducted ongoing training with our principals and school counselors regarding graduation requirements and course sequencing. We provided an ICAP training to all of our counselors and principals and implemented these new individualized career plans for our students. And we have a system for tracking that through our SAM system. We've ensured that our counselors and record clerks have more oversight related to assisting with accuracy of records. What we found in analyzing our records was that records clerks may have been working on records in isolation and they did not necessarily understand how to evaluate a transcript. So, we've created a process where they work collaboratively and we can ensure the accuracy of records. We, again, and this is a process that twelve months ago, eighteen months ago, that may not have been a finished product, we were building this and now we're in a space where we believe this can be productive. We have those processes in place. We're reviewing and revising board policy to ensure students are not allowed to participate in early release unless all graduation requirements are, have been met. We're conducting onsite checkpoints at each high school with the lead counselor and principal, reviewing student transcripts, cumulative folders, and permanent records. And we do that five times over, over the year. We'd like to just highlight, again, and we won't, we can't get into the weeds because of the time, but we would definitely like to bring out just one sample of why we think that there were issues, factual issues with the records. Callaway High School, in the report, in your report from, in the audit findings, it was noted that Callaway High School graduated two-hundred-and-twenty-four students and of that two-hundred-and-twenty-four students, there were a number of those students that were not eligible for graduation. Students identified as failing to meet graduation requirements did not participate in graduation, the exercises as reported by the MDE. Only two-hundred eligible students graduated from Callaway, not two-twenty-four. We have the documentation in the attachment F to kind of outline it and explain how we provided the screening to ensure that the right students graduated. But that is listed in the audit and that is just simply not, not the case. MDE incorrectly reported the graduation of ineligible students at all seven of the high schools. And this is just a graphic of that to look at the way we, our screening process, we have mechanisms in place to look at graduates, to screen, to make sure that students have met the graduation requirements and students who have not met those requirements do not graduate. And so, again, these are some differences in numbers, but our documentation that's outlined speaks to the fact that all of our students met the graduation requirements. We'd be glad to address that with any questions later. Standard Twenty, big standard. We know that our teacher corps, when I first came into the space, my communication with staff is that in order for us to move this district to where it needs to go, we have to improve our teacher corps. We have to have strong teachers and we have to support those teachers. The district has a board-approved instructional management system that was, one was approved in November two thousand and sixteen, another was approved in July of two thousand and seventeen. You can see that very comprehensive plan in Exhibit G. We met with our teachers and our teachers said to us in exit conferences, we need to be better prepared. We're not leaving because of money, we're not leaving because students are, because we have discipline issues, we're leaving because we feel that we're not, in many cases, equipped with what we need to work with the students. So, what did we do? Our response to that, we worked with our board, we put a professional development department and a curriculum department in place, something that we've not had in the past seven years, to focus on teaching and learning. We have standards-based professional development has been initiated for all instructional staff, including the limited-service teachers that we have, that's a real issue. We have limited-service teachers, there's a teacher shortage and we own that, but it's our responsibility to empower those people to be successful if they're in the classroom with our children. Teacher mentors have been hired to support our new teachers. This summer alone, we trained over a hundred teachers on lesson planning, differentiation, teaching students, engaging students, all of those things that you heard about in the audit that did not exist when the orders were there. We trained staff and we also trained teams of teachers within buildings so that they can provide the training, it can be job embedded. So, these are things that we have done that are in place right now as we speak and we're seeing the promise that, that exists there. We've also offered signing bonuses and incentive pay to our teachers in those core areas. The district will utilize a professional development service that are offered by the MDE. And we're continuing to leverage our federal dollars to provide the job-embedded professional development and coaching. Standard Twenty-nine, transportation, you all, it's been, it's been very public, our transportation woes. We had issues with transportation. Much of what you saw in the document that you have in the audit, it existed. Twelve months ago, six months ago, when, when we had an opportunity to work the corrective action plan and put things in place, we have done that and we've seen the positive impact of that. We've completed the quarterly inspection in July of two thousand and seventeen and all noted vehicles are ready for inspection by the MDE. The district purchased forty-four new buses with GPS to monitor on-time arrival for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen school year. Not, and those buses are here, are at our site. So, our fleet has been upgraded. Our drivers, we raised the pay of our drivers from ten dollars an hour to fourteen dollars an hour so that we could recruit and retain drivers. And it worked. We now, we don't have a bus shortage, we don't have a driver shortage and all of our routes are currently covered. And so, we're working continuously on making sure that we have standby drivers. So, if drivers are ill, we have those, those individuals that can bag them up. The district has invested in equipment and personnel to make Standard Twenty-nine meet the compliance requirements. Standard Twenty-nine transportation program continued. We have a trainer that's on staff to assist our applicants that might be, we may have a bus monitor that wants to be certified, we have individuals on staff to work with. Drivers have been assigned, as I mentioned, to all two-hundred-and-ten routes. Bus arrival time as noted by GPS, third-party, not us, by the information from GPS is that this year, we have a ninety-five percent on-time arrival rate, which is significantly better than it was last year, which is a direct indication that if given the time to correct the actions, we have what, what it takes to make those corrective actions and see the improvement, which is what this is all about. Standard Thirty, school district facilities, again, that's another area that's been documented. We have made significant strides in the area of facilities. The district has made significant progress in correcting the citations that were cited. On April fifth through the twenty-second of two thousand and sixteen, the district received fifteen-hundred-and-forty-one citations. To date, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven of those have been corrected and fourteen-hundred-and-two of those have been certified by the MDE as late as June twenty-sixth. Corrective action installations, there's a list there of all of the things you all saw last year, the attention that the fire extinguishers received, we purchased and, and put eight-hundred-and-thirty-three fire extinguishers in place, twenty-eight water coolers, six lavatories. The list goes on and on of things that we have done and you can see Exhibit One to give further clarity on that information. And also, we, in the facilities, in the CAP, ninety-six percent of all the corrective actions in the CAP from, from the original corrective action plan have been resolved. A limited audit included twenty-two schools and fifty-eight percent from the full audit that included thirty-eight schools. And we'd just like to note that if you look at the limited audit, there are twenty-two schools, the twenty-two schools in a limited audit generated fifteen-hundred-and-forty-one citations. The district has completed fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-seven and the MDE has verified through documentation that's there of a list that have been signed off on from those individuals that worked with our staff. And in the full audit, you'll see that with thirty-eight schools, there were only seven-hundred-and-six infractions. That in itself shows that significant work, we scaled significant work. Much was made of the fact that we did not take things that we learned in the twenty-two schools and scale it to all fifty-eight schools. And this is a clear indication that we were doing that in the area of facilities. If not, there would have been, there should have been far more citations. And just, we have, the district has secured professional, but there are some things that are, from a facility standpoint, that you just can't do overnight. It takes time, it takes funding, it takes professional services. So, the district has secured professional environmental firms for chemical container count removals. We've secured professional engineering firms to assist with determining structural, material deficiencies. We've secured professional architecture firm to assist with designing the window retrofits, which was listed as something that needed to be corrected. We've proceeded with the purchase and installation of classroom lavatories, our lavatories for one specific school, which was something that was noted. We've secured twelve school boilers and pressure vessels certifications and are now awaiting MDE's approval for the verification. We've secured professional architecture firm to assess- Corrective action installations, there's a list there of all of the things you all saw last year, the, the attention that the fire extinguishers received, we purchased and, and put 833 fire extinguishers in place, 28 water coolers, six lavatories. The list goes on and on of things that we have done, and you can see exhibit one to give further clarity on, on that information. And also, we, in the facilities, in the cap, 96% of all the corrective actions in the cap are from, from the, the original corrective action plan have been resolved. A limited audit included 22 schools and 58% from the full audit that included 38 schools. And we'd just like to note that, if you look at the limited audit, there are 22 schools, the 22 schools in a limited audit generated 1,541 citations. The district has completed 1,487 and the MDE has verified through documentation that's there of, a list that have been signed off on from those individuals that worked with our staff. And in the full audit, you'll see that with 38 schools, there were only 706 infractions. That in itself shows that significant work, we scaled significant work. Much was made of the fact that we did not take things that we learned in the, in the 22 schools and scale it to all 58 schools. And this is a clear indication that we were doing that in the area of facilities. If not, there would have been, there should have been far more citations. And just, we have, the district has secured professional, but there are some things that are, from a facility standpoint, that you just can't do overnight. It takes time, it takes funding, it takes professional services. So the district has secured professional environmental firms for chemical container count removals, we've secured professional engineering firms to assist with determining structural material deficiencies, we've secured professional architecture firm to assist with designing the window retrofits, which was listed as, as something that needed to be corrected. We've proceeded with the purchase and installation of classroom laboratories, our laboratories for one specific school, which was something that was noted. We've secured 12 school boilers and pressure vessels certifications and are now awaiting MDE's approval for the verification. We've secured professional architecture firm to assess 22 school facilities in addition to MDE's findings because we want to be proactive and make sure that we have a strategic plan for addressing those issues that exist, that might come up in the future. Standard 31, school safety plan, which is, this is critical, this is one of our, one of our goals, and we would like to encourage you to take a walk in one of our schools, to see for yourself how safe our schools are. I had a member of the legislation just recently walked up to me and said that they had an unannounced visit to Callaway High School and how orderly it was in the building. She noted, I didn't know it was a school, it was so quiet and orderly. These are the kind of testimonies that we're hearing, not, maybe not the case 12 months ago, 18 months ago. But again, as I go back to my statement earlier, we know that 12 months ago is vastly different than today. And so we, we want you to, to think about that theme as you make a decision, that a lot of what's in this audit, what's the pages that have been discussed this morning and what we're, what we heard, and that's out there and it's been out there for months, are things that go back 18 months and might have been in place 18, 12 months ago, but things, again, we feel vastly different. The district continuously, we believe that we have to be proactive from a safety standpoint. We have positive behavior intervention programs to encourage nonviolent conflict resolution. We've implemented a program in conjunction with the U.S. Attorney's Office called LEED or Legal Enrichment in Decision Making. This encourages students to make sound decisions. We've, we've instituted a program in collaboration with some partners, Talk About the Problem, Tools for Life, which deals with being proactive and teaches students how to make positive decisions. And of course, all of, everyone in the space understands the move to restore to justice, and we're working on those things as well in our district. The district has repaired metal detectors, district has repaired metal detectors. Metal detectors have been placed in all middle and high schools in the district. The district has consulted with the manufacturers and we're programming and calibrating metal detectors according to industry standard and recommendation. Walk-through metal detectors have been calibrated and are being tested every 30 days and recalibrated as needed. The district has added secondary detection. If someone walks through and, and there's an alarm, there's a secondary person there to, to check that, that individual. Safety officers have been trained to assist during the student transition times to minimize distractions. All school resource officers and school safety officers have attended 40 hours of professional development training, which has included protocols on walk-through metal detectors. And again, over the, the seven months that we've had to, to actually work with this team in place, we, we again believe that significant progress has been made. We've ensured that all elementary schools have controlled access at the main entryway. This includes magnetic door locks, remote release, two-way ear comms, cameras for the office to monitor. Proper identification is being collected by visitors at school entry point. The district has hired additional officers so that if we have someone that's absent in the building, an officer, we can have someone to come in and backfield so that we don't have gaps in our security, being proactive. All school crisis response plans have been updated and included MDE requirement, and not only have they been updated, schools are training on a monthly basis, training on these, these crisis management plans so that staff know where to reunify, where reunification points are, and they understand the dynamics of that, that plan. There were extensive media reports attached to, to your findings, and we would like to note that there are some positive things taking place in our district. We clearly have good things happening. We'd just like to share just some positive news about JPS. Not one, but two of our JRTC candidates from Jimmy O. High School were accepted to attend the U.S. Military Academy Preparatory School. The program is a selective, only 10% of the applicants are accepted. Another JRTC cadet was first-place winner of U.S. Army National SA Contest. And in your exhibit K, you'll see example after example. Davis Magnet, number one school in the state for multiple consecutive years. Just this board recognized Baker Science teacher of being a finalist for Presidential Awards of Excellence. And again, your exhibit has example after example, positive things that are happening in our district. And in conclusion, we, we have, we've demonstrated that an extreme emergency does not exist at this time in the Jackson Public School District. We say again that this district today is vastly different than it was 12 months ago. Yes, we, we have a ways to go, and anyone that comes in will have challenges and will have a ways to go. But we feel that we have made significant progress in, in, in the work that we've done. And we think, the reason that we're so positive that we can do this, we can make the lift that's, that's needed is, is because of the key partnerships that we have in this city. Just the attention that this is, this has generated over the past few days and the people that have come out in support of this district. Kellogg Foundation, a partner that has take, embraced the city of, of Jackson, Jackson Public Schools. They chose Jackson Public Schools as one of their target areas from across the country. So we believe that we can leverage the work with them to help us. The city of Jackson, our mayor was here yesterday all day and has been here today to support this effort because of how important it is. Graduation Alliance, a partner of the MDE that's been working with us to help us with the graduation rate that is now not 68%, but plus 70-plus percent. The Junior League, Operation Shoestrings, 100 Black Men of Jackson, Council of Great City Schools, which works with urban schools all across the country, have locked hands with us to support us. United Way of the Capital Area, LaFleur's Bluff, and several others. The support and resources from these organizations are aligned with the work that we're doing to improve our schools and our student achievement. And the Jackson Public School District has gained momentum, and we ask this commission to humbly accept our requests. We, we humbly ask that you accept our request, to be given a chance to continue the work that has been done to improve the district as outlined in State Board Corrective Action Plan. We believe that if we are able to go through this process to correct these actions while not simultaneously having to go through an investigative audit, we can accelerate the momentum and do what is needed to move our district to where we all want it to be, and most importantly, do what is best for the children of this school's district. We welcome continued oversight, technical assistance with the MDE, we embrace that, but we ask that we be allowed to do that work. We have about five minutes left, I think, and I would like for...
Seconds.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. I, I thought we had our board members wanted to speak, but I just would like to acknowledge our board members that are here and very supportive of the work that is, that is being done. So at this time, I think that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Murray. Presentation, now the attorneys, I mean, the questions can be asked from the commission, from the board, to the district as well as to the Department of Education's Office of Accreditation. So we're going to give just a minute. Yes, they're going to ask questions, and then the attorneys will have an opportunity. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, yes, and I lost my voice. Yes, depending on their questions, yes.
All right. Do members of the board have questions from either Jackson Public Schools or from the Department of Accreditation?
Madam Chair, I have a question for clarification, and I, I think I have followed both presentations. And I am not clear of how we got to the point of Jackson Public is saying that they have completed most of those, corrected most of those standards, and then the department is saying still only 24. Somewhere, there's, there's a wide discrepancy. Somewhere that have to be documents or someone that can entail the board whether or not these 32 standards, if it's 24, if it's 18, if it's 30, from what I hear, there's a wide discrepancy of whether or not they have been complete.
Are you, the reason that, Dr. Vandeford?
Either or.
I think the, the correct terminology for us would be addressed, again, because we have, we have addressed all standards, and I think the, the clearance comes from the department. And so for us, that, that's one of the, the concerns that we've had. We, we do not, and I think that this process, it was, it was a challenge for, as I said yesterday, for the department and for the district, because it requires a certain level of, of capacity to be able to monitor and provide technical assistance, I, I think, in my opinion, and to also conduct an investigative audit. So some of the, there was some follow-up, there were some cases where the department came back and, and looked at things and, and gave us some feedback, and there were other departments that did not. They came into the district, they made a finding, and that was it. We've had extensive conversation and we've monitored who was in the district, when they were in the district, who came back for follow-up in every single standard, when they entered a building, how long they stayed. We kept those very deliberate notes to be able to determine who came back and when they came back. And so again, some of the standard, some people came back and monitored and others didn't. So I don't think that there has been the progress report, I think, at this point, to determine the progress that's been made. We had, we've worked with an organization because we wanted to know, what kind of progress are we making? We were kind of new at this and are we making progress? So we reached out to determine, to get someone to help us, to determine if we're making progress. Are we putting things in place that's going to help us make the corrective action? So I don't think that, that that assessment has been done in all areas.
Like for Dr. Vandeford to respond?
Yeah, because it's a wide discrepancy.
Okay, Dr. Vandeford.
So as I indicated in the report that I made to the board, the Office of Accreditation and other MDE program offices have conducted all follow-up visits that have been requested by the district. If the district provided the evidence that was required to clear the process standard, we cleared the standard. If they did not, the standard was not cleared and it remains on record. The evidence that we have for both compliance and non-compliance is on file in the Office of Accreditation, so I have mounds and mounds and mounds of documentation. However, it can't be made publicly available because we would have to go through the redaction process to ensure that we didn't have any publicly identifiable information in that. But, but you're, you're right. I mean, there, you know, throughout the conversations, I mean, let's just use graduation for example, there are inconsistencies. I mean, you pull up Callaway High School, because that's an example that the district used in their report. We, MCIS says there's 245 seniors for school year 16, 17 at Callaway High School. We were provided records for 224 senior records onsite that day that the Office of Accreditation counted and logged. The district, in the information they've given you, they said it's only 200. Well, in one of these binders, the program, and, and we have it too, the graduation program for Callaway, the district says it's 200. I counted them this morning and it's 198. So, I mean, there's inconsistencies in numbers across the board, but if the standard has been cleared and they've asked us to come back and clear it, we've marked it off the list. I mean, so...
So I'm, I'm getting to the real point. So obviously, those sightings have been revisited to make sure that they...
All standards were revisited. We had two audits. The, the sample audit, I mean, the, the audit of the sample in April of 2016, that's what the corrective action plan was developed on. All the timelines in that corrective action plan that the board approved in December of 2016 had expired prior to us closing the audit on July 31st. It may be with the exception of one that was related to instructions for this current school year. So, you know, that said, we were auditing, as Dr. Murray pointed out, we were implementing a corrective action plan and auditing at the same time in addition to conducting follow-up visits. I mean, if, look at the report on transportation, we went back over 10 times because it says their fleet inventory is 229. After multiple inspections, which was over 10, they cleared 177 of the buses. So that means we went back more than 10 times to clear that. And, you know, related to deficiencies for the facilities, and the district had a slide on that, that, you know, in my opinion, the data's not accurate on that because you can look at standard 30 in your binder, and anything that's in red was from the first audit, anything that's in black is from the new audit, and anything that has been cleared through July 31st has a strike through. Now, we have not been back in the district since the close of the audit. I conducted the exit conference with the superintendent on July 31st. My team nor any other MDE staff have been back in the district conducting follow-up visits since July 31st. But on the facilities, we went back as late as June to 11 schools, and only one of the 11 schools cleared at that time. So, I mean, I, I, you know, to be honest, you know, I don't know how to answer your question. I mean, I, I, when the commission was trying to do the, the he said, she said, you know, and work that out yesterday, I said, you know, unfortunately, I've been at this table 16 times for the commission or the board to have to consider whether or not an emergency exists. And, and I shared with the commission yesterday, at no point has the district ever come in and said, "We agree with the findings of the MDE, we determine." I mean, that, that's just the human nature of it.
Dr. Murray, what you have up here, you never went back to the department, the ones that you say you have cleared?
Well, and I, and I think yesterday, we, we kind of got at this, I think there was a mix-up in, in communication, okay? Because what, the information, we met with the state superintendent along with other members of the staff and all of our executive team, and we talked about some process. There were some issues early on and who was calling, who was making contact. So in order to provide some structure to that, I was given the directive, well, we made the decision collectively that I would communicate with Dr. Sargent, who is, who was at the time our cap administrator. He would communicate with the staff member with the MDE as it related to when we needed technical assistance or when someone would come back. It was communicated to him that no standards would be clear until the audit was complete. That was the communication that was given to us, that no standards would be clear unless the audit was complete. Whether it was the assumption or the inference that was made was that there should not be, there's no need to call anyone back because nothing is going to be cleared until the audit is complete. The audit was completed in July, on July 31st. So I received a call from Dr. Vandeford in maybe June, and the statement was, "This is a courtesy call because you all have not asked anyone to come back to look at errors." And at that time, I said, "Well, hold up." It was my understanding that we were not to request anyone to come back because nothing would be clear, and at that time, you know, we, we communicated and we made arrangements for someone to come back for transportation and for facilities. But prior to that date, it was the understanding of myself and of Dr. Sargent, who worked through this process, that we, that nothing would be clear. Standard 17.2, I think it was, we had, had been cleared, I think, in the initial audit and there was, we wanted to have someone come back to look at it because we felt like there had been some progress, and we met, we had conversation. And again, the, the understanding that we had was that unless, nothing would be clear until the audit was complete because they had come back and things were not clear, and so they, it was necessary to complete the audit. And so again, I think that may have been the miscommunication that, that occurred throughout that process.
Madam Chair, but I still don't know whether these standards have been cleared or not. I still don't understand whether they're clear or not.
Dr. Kelly has a question?
I have several. I'll, I'll ask them. I'll start with a very basic one. There appear to be a discrepancy... There appear to be a discrepancy between our department here and you, Dr. Murray, in terms of the number of days that the school district had to respond to the audit. Dr. Vanderford used 30 days, you're saying it was seven days.
30 days for the limited audit. For the investigative audit, it was, my reference was to the investigative audit that we received. Yes, sir.
Okay, so there is no discrepancy there, then? One, a couple of other questions. There was reference made in Dr. Vanderford's report about teachers being threatened to pass students. Would you respond to that, please?
Yes, sir. That is, that is not true. And Mrs., and if I can reference a conversation that we had in the exit conference, it was noted in the exit conference that that was going to appear in the report, and we have, you know, there were multiple people in the conference, that that would appear in the report, because calls had been received across the state about that occurring. And so, it would appear, because, and again, that was brought out by the department. I mean, just, it was noted that this will appear in the report, because we're getting calls from around the state of this happening. We are not, I can categorically say, I was approached by three different buildings at every level. That is a no-no. We don't do that. And so, those individuals under my leadership know that we don't do that. We don't encourage teachers. That is against the law. Encourage teachers to change grades, that's not something that we do. We don't pressure teachers to change grades. And so, again, I don't know where the report came from, but I do know that in the exit conference, and there were other staff present, MDE staff and our staff, and it was noted that this would appear in the report, that, because, again, the statement was, "This is occurring around the state, and we're getting calls." And so, again, that was my only knowledge of that. Nothing has been reported to me by a teacher, nothing has been reported from anyone under my supervision by a teacher saying that they've been pressured, and they will. Our teachers will reach out, and they will say that, and to my knowledge, that is not, that has not occurred. And I would definitely love to investigate that, because that is not something that we condone or that we encourage.
Dr. Vanderford, would you respond to that?
So going back to the question that you had about the 30 days, I did, in my talking points, address the 30 days, but that was for the audit report. And then, the 30 days, the accreditation audit procedures, you do not require that if a determination is being made for an extreme state of emergency, that 30 days is required. I did, I delivered the report to the district on August 31st at 8:00, or 8:30 in the morning. So that's when the district received the report. And yesterday and today, the district expressed concerns about the amount of time that they've had to respond, but not until 10:39 on Tuesday morning. I received a fax from the district requesting additional time to respond. So that response, in my opinion, came at a very late hour. It should have come on August 31st. However, the meeting had been set with the commission. I didn't have the authority to address that, and I responded to the commission as executive secretary, stating that I did not have such authority. But no motion was made before the commission yesterday either to provide additional time to respond. No official motion that the commission would have had to act on yesterday.
Oh, if we were to go back to the first sampling audit, the limited number of schools that were involved, and follow that timeline to the time that the investigative audit was done, how many months is that?
Approximately 18.
18 months that the district had to respond?
Yes, sir. And that was the point I was making about notice and opportunity in my talking points. Because we've made the district, along the way, aware of the concerns as they've been noted, and some examples that I gave to the commission yesterday was with the special education weekly reports that they gave. All of our facility reports were provided to the district upon completion of the reports. So everything that you have behind standard 30 that was compiled for the district and you in the report on August 31st have been provided to the district, you know, since April, May, and June of 2016.
Madam Chair, can I complete my line?
Pardon me, Dr. Kelly. Do you want Dr. Vanderford to respond to the issue about teachers and grades, or you want to move on?
Yes, yes, that was the second question.
So, I mean, I did address it with the district, I mean, at the exit conference. I mean, I addressed the immunization concerns, because we were getting calls from the parents. And then, when a physician and a nurse from UNC contacted us, so I, you know, transparent, made the district aware that these were reports that we were getting, and for the sake of transparency, said, "These are going to, the notice of these complaints," you know, "and these teachers, you know, not in this district, but across the state, when district employees have issues and they report them," I mean, they have fear of retaliation. I mean, they're, that's their concern, and so, I mean, we receive the reports, we have them.
Dr. Murray, there was a reference made to electronic devices being used in the testing area during testing. Can you tell us why that was being done?
Yes, sir. We definitely, we have test security plans that are clear. We train our people, and we would like to know the same thing. I spoke just this morning with our district test coordinator. And the district coordinator, the process, the way I understand it, if there's an infraction within a building, then it is to be reported to the district test coordinator as a violation. That did not happen. And so, in the report, we're seeing it at the same time that you're seeing it, because if it's reported to us, we're going to address it. Well, we were told yesterday that it was an ongoing investigation, which is, again, something that we heard for the first time yesterday. But again, if there's an infraction that happens, the process, as I understand it, is that if it happens in a building, then the department has, makes a contact to the district coordinator, and then we have a process by which we investigate. That did not hap, that did not happen. Cell phones, cell phones going off, individuals prohibiting individuals from going into rooms, those kinds of things was in the report. And so, we had a very long conversation with our test coordinator, and that information simply, we cannot document that any of that was reported, but it did appear in the report. And I'd just like to note, there was a specific example of a school where that a person was prohibited from going into a testing site. What happened was, the monitor from MDE was taking pictures, which is not something, those of you that are former administrators at this table would know that, you wouldn't allow that in a building, regardless of who the person is. And so, the policy clearly says that the only individuals that can have an electronic device are the test coordinator and instruct someone in technology, no one else. That's MDE's policy. And so, the principal, of course, had concerns about that and addressed those concerns at that time.
Dr. Vanderford, would you respond, please?
Yes, sir. This was a very lengthy conversation at the commission meeting yesterday as well, and Mr. Drain addressed that. But when, as Mr., as Dr. Murray mentioned, they were aware every time that MDE was in the district. So each time that we were on-site for an audit, and we're talking specifically about test security here, so each time, and our auditors went to one or more of the schools multiple times, someone from the school notified the district office that we were there. So central office personnel came to the school and was present while MDE was there. And so, when Mr. Drain provided his debriefing at the school, there was central office staff there, present to hear the concerns as part of the debriefing. And it was noted yesterday that, you know, the district office wasn't aware of it, but one of the principals wrote, sent an email to the district test coordinator, which later sent the email to MDE, which was during statewide testing going on. So, and we have that correspondence as evidence that the district was not made, that the district was made aware of these issues prior to the release of the August 31st report.
Madam Chair, I have one last question, if I could, please. There was reference made to federal funds that were in the budget that have not been spent at the time of the investigative audit. There's about 15 days left in this fiscal year. Where are those funds?
Those funds, it's about, it's about $1,008, actually, that, it's, the total funds are The balance of that remaining is about $751,614. We obligated $535,000 from Title II. The balance is $83,600 to date. So those funds, again, this was brought up on yesterday, but again, the date is September 30th. And so, we have $16 million in title funds. And today, we've spent probably, we have about $751,000, and the plan is in place, and these funds will be obligated by the required, and spent by the, as required.
Madam Chair, that concludes my question.
If there are no other questions, then we will hear from the closing from the legal teams.
We'll begin with the district. You have 10 minutes, and I will give you a two-minute warning.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jim Keith, and I'm the attorney that's giving the closing statement for the district in this regard. And first of all, I just want to tell you that we certainly appreciate and respect MDE's effort to identify issues that the district needs to address in order to become a better district. There's no question about that. We do disagree with MDE's conclusion and the Commission on Accreditation that an extreme emergency exists, and some of that you've already heard. But let me, before I get into some prepared statements, let me address Mr. McClellan's question. You ask probably the most crucial question that has occurred in these last two days, and that is, where are we today? And there's a dispute as to where we are today. This man on my right has said, "We're not the same district we were a year ago or even six months ago." MDE's data, a lot of their findings did happen a long time ago, a year ago, 18 months ago it started, and a lot of that has been addressed. So here's what I suggest, because this is too important of a decision for us to make on a whim, or a difference of where are we are or where we're not. Why don't we determine where we are? Why doesn't this board tell MDE to go back to JPS to see which one of these standards they can clear? There's the proof in the pudding. Before you make the vote to take over, I think that is just the simplest thing that we could do to make sure we don't make a major mistake. And I haven't even discussed this issue with this superintendent here, and the board, but I can assure you, they're willing to stand by that, because they know how much work they have put into it. I just don't think you should make a decision based on 18-month-old, or 12-month-old, or even six-month-old data. This man has only been in office effectively since the 1st of January, and you saw the major changes that have taken place, one of which was the organizational restructure. I just think it's too important. Dr. Vanderford admitted, they have not gone back in, and there's a dispute over whether we ask for them to come back in or not. Folks, that's petty. We need to get past that and say, "Okay, we didn't maybe ask you to come back in, but at the same time, you were saying the audit wasn't complete, so let's just get beyond that." And Mr. McClellan, I just think that the answer to your question needs to come from the MDE team to go back to the district, and let's just see what's been cleared. And then, we can report back to the board, and then, if you want to take this district over, you obviously have that option. This is too important of a decision to leave it based upon who said what, he said this, and so on. Mr. Kelly, you asked some pretty good questions about, really good questions about some of these issues that you heard, but one thing's, I think, that you got, the response from Dr. Vanderford, were these reports coming from around the state. How in the world do we verify those reports? Those of you in education know, we get reports all the time from people who are disgruntled for whatever reason. We can't, we can't address hearsay. We really can't. Now, this gentleman knows good and well, we don't, we certainly do not allow that. And if someone believes they're being pressured, there is a process to address that. This 30-day issue, I want to mention that. If you look at the procedures that this board adopted for hearing these matters, under step two of the process, MDE is given 30 calendar days to complete its report. No question. Their audit finished on July 31st, and I would venture to say that they picked a date to complete that audit, because they knew that they had 30 days from that date to complete their report, and they did it. They completed on the 30th day. They took their 30 days in step two. Interestingly, if you look at the procedures, and it's in your materials, at that point, that's where MDE says these procedures no longer apply, since we're going for an emergency takeover. I dare you to show me in your procedures where there's an exception to the 30-day requirement allowed this gentleman because of a takeover. It's not in there. It is not in your procedures. Your procedures go on to say, "JPS has 30 days to refute the allegations," and if we don't refute them within 30 days, guess what? They're accepted. But yet, we were given nine school days. It says 30 school days. You know what the deadline for 30 school days was? October 13th. Yet, we were here yesterday after nine school days of having to analyze a 30, or a 700-and-some odd-page report, and come up with our challenges to all of those allegations in there. And we could, and contrary to what Dr. Vanderford just said, we could have refuted these at any time. How do you refute something when a report's preliminary? Until that audit report was finalized, we'd be wasting our time and the State Department's time. So we didn't have a chance. And for the, for the MDE to take the position that because this is an extreme emergency, we don't get the chance to refute the allegations, that's all we've asked far from the beginning. Dr. Vanderford said, "Well, we didn't, MDE didn't get a letter until Tuesday morning asking for a delay." Well, you know, we were working hard to try to meet the deadline for tomorrow. It became obvious on Tuesday morning, we needed more time. We wrote a letter over here. Dr. Vanderford writes back and says, "I don't have the authority to give you an extension." She said, "We didn't make a formal request yesterday." The first words out of his mouth and my mouth yesterday to the commission was, "We didn't get 30 days." And I even said to him, "You can't make a decision without going through the documents that we submitted." The commission yesterday went into executive session, and not a one of them took their materials that we had presented to them to review. So they did not look at our evidence. So, Mr. Kelly, what's happened in this process is the commission did look at the MDE's report. They admitted, they had nine, they had 13 days after August 31st to review MDE's report, and they did. And yesterday, they did not, other than just thumbing through them during the process of the arguments, did they look at our information, didn't even consider it in executive session. That is an arbitrary decision. It is not fair to this school district. This is too important of a decision to not give this district the opportunity to address these issues. That's all we're asking for, fairness, to be heard. We have not been heard, and, Mr. Kelly, we have not been heard in this process, I promise you, because nobody has looked at our executives. You guys have not had a chance to look at them today. I know you haven't, because we just didn't have time to get them to you. Now, that's why I think if we want to be fair to JPS and the students in this district, and we all know, taking over a district is traumatic to the community, it's traumatic to the students. And we don't need to make a mistake here. We need, this is the second-largest school district in the state. Sure, there's been past mistakes, but I can tell you, in my 35 years of being in a school district, I've never seen a district get more aggressive in trying to address these accreditation issues than this district has done over the last several months since this man has been in office. The new team, the mayor, and his effort. How many times have you had the mayor of Jackson sit here for two days' worth of hearings in support of this school district? And he's got appointment power of three more board members.
Minutes.
How much? Two minutes, okay. To put on this board, people who are invested in this city. I will give MDE credit here. You have, I think, sent a wake-up call to JPS, and this man has responded. His leadership team has responded. He has done more in six or seven months than anybody, any other administrator or superintendent, and I don't know, in years of working with that district. So let's don't make the mistake of jumping the gun. And, Mr. McClellan, I think we need to take your suggestion, and let's determine where we are. And it is, and besides, we could even do that within the next time, the next couple of weeks, even considering the fact that if we had been given our 30 days, we'd have a, an October 13th deadline. This is not going to be an inordinate delay. Here's what's interesting in this extreme emergency. The issues that would have declared extreme emergency, the busing, the safety, the security, all of that, that all happened almost a year ago. It's been corrected. So now, what is this extreme emergency? Why weren't we taken over a year ago? Those things that were in place then, sure, I don't think we'd be here if you had brought us before you a year ago. Today, those conditions don't exist. And that's all we're asking is, is that you take a look, make sure you know where we are. And you don't have to accept this takeover recommendation. You could appoint someone to work with this gentleman and give you feedback. And if you didn't like the decisions they were making, you know the statute gives you the right to overturn any decision the board or the superintendent makes, even without a takeover. Because you assign somebody there to work with them. You can do that. You don't have to do this. You can assign somebody there to make this thing work. So let's do it right. Let's make sure that we're fair to JPS and the students in that district.
Time is a lot.
And give this, give this man a chance to make the improvements. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're ready.
Good afternoon, Board. Just for transparency's sake, I want to bring something to the Board's attention, since there's been this argument and dispute about the 30 days. This morning, the district attempted to seek a motion for a temporary restraining order. The court, the Hines County Chancery Court, denied that temporary restraining order based on that same argument about insufficient time. So I just want to make you aware of that.
I'm going to check, and it's not like the judge ruled. The judge ruled he did not have jurisdiction to rule a record. That is a mistake. The judge said.
Yesterday, the Commission on School Accreditation listened to both sides, and they asked questions, and they determined that an extreme emergency situation exists that jeopardizes, that's based on the safety, security, and educational interest of the students. Think about your vision. Students in JPS are being systematically denied a quality education. JPS leaders have for far too long ignored the problems, and they are demonstrating repeated negligence by failing to fix them. The students are being denied an opportunity to achieve the success that you envision. Winston Churchill said, "Criticism may not be agreeable, but it's necessary. It fulfills the function as pain in the human body. It calls attention to an unhealthy state of things." The audit report findings are meant to be constructive, but to illustrate that there is an unhealthy state of affairs in the Jackson Public School District. As Dr. Vanderford mentioned, following a limited audit, the commission downgraded the accreditation status to probation and gave the district a chance to fix the problems. They met repeatedly with the district. And even through a cap, through technical assistance, through follow-up visits, and the full investigative audit, which both parties endured, the district is worse off in the sense that they are now in violation of 24 standards. And I want to emphasize that the MDE went in as recently as July and in April and evaluated of this year, of 2017, and evaluated the standards, the same standards. There were some things that were cleared, but they are still in violation of 24 of the 32 process standards. The district is in violation of 75%. They're in violation of seven of the eight most serious areas, not standards, areas. They're in violation of state law, state board policy, and federal law. Let's just discuss some of them. The most important, about education, it's about instruction. Instruction's not taking place in these classrooms. They're not following guidelines that the board approved, starting as early as early childhood classes. Teachers aren't following lesson plans. Teachers have no control of the class. There's no tiered intervention. There are substitutes in classrooms. There's uncertified personnel. There's governance issues. Ineligible students are graduating. There are special ed issues. And may I remind you, five years ago, we were in the district dealing with special ed issues. We gave them another chance. And here we are, five years later, facing the same problems again. There are safety issues. They fixed some things, we'll give them that. But it's a lot easier to fix a window and a door. It takes time, we get that, but they haven't focused on education. They haven't focused on the instruction. And that brings you to the academic performance. Statistics that have been provided show that from 2012 to 2015, they were a D. In 2016, they were an F. Their proficiency across the board, ELA, math, US history, science, they've all dropped. There's conversations around this community about it being the second-largest district in the state, and that it's an urban district. I'm going to paint a picture for you of another district in another state. It's the fourth-largest urban district in the nation, and it's a majority-minority district. They have 392 schools, 345,000 students, and over 56 different languages are spoken. 71%, over 71% of the students receive free and reduced lunches. Not one of those schools is an F school. Almost 40% are As. That's Miami-Dade County, and our accountability system is modeled off of Florida's. This just goes to show what effective leadership, appropriate instruction, and a safe school climate, a positive school climate can do. It's possible for JPS. Of paramount importance is to have a functioning school that's serving the students. The work you do, that MDE does, that the districts are supposed to do, is based on this. That every child in Mississippi deserves the opportunity to use their gifts as far as it will let them. When those opportunities are not being, are being denied, it's our duty to act. There's a lot of talk about all of these state takeovers, that there have been 19. Historically, the model did what it was supposed to do. A conservator was put in place to bring the district back into compliance with policy and law. But this year, the statute changed. The model is now based on academic achievement. An interim superintendent is going to be put in place. It's an instructional leader. And before the district can be returned to local control, they have to be successful for a minimum of five years. This is not about taking over a district now. It's about transforming a district. In all previous 19 conservatorships, the commission, the state board of education, and the governor have stepped in for far less than what JPS is facing. Law requires the board to consider if an extreme emergency exists that jeopardizes the safety, security, or educational interests of the students in the district. The safety, the security, and the educational interests. You only need one. You have all three. Serious violation or violations of standards, federal law or state law. You only need one. You have all of them. It's now in your hands to think about protecting these students and protecting their education. Almost 27,000 children are enrolled in this district. Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon we can use to change the world." Failure to act will have a disastrous impact on the education and lives of the students in the Jackson Public School District.
We have two minutes left, if you'd like to say anything else.
I'm good. Thank you, Board.
All right, thank you. Thank you. It is, I'm sorry?
I'll take her two minutes.
I don't think so.
No, it can't be, out there.
Oh, you need to go.
I'll laugh. One of these days, you're going to get old, too.
Thank goodness, we're not as old as you. At this point, this concludes all of our discussion regarding the Jackson Public School issue. It is 12:30. I think it's a good time to break for lunch, and then we'll come back and finish our discussion and proceed with the rest of the board meeting. So let's break, and let's come back at 1:30. If you would take your seats, please, and let's resume our meeting.
Go, ma'am, I'll talk to you back.
Thank you. We have heard earlier from the Office of Accreditation, and we've also heard from the, from the school district. But before, we had to have all this conversation before we could determine whether an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District. So now, we will, as far, the board will consider entering into executive session to further discuss the issues that we've heard this morning. Do we have a motion related to that?
Madam Chair, I move that the board consider going into executive session for discussions and/or deliberations with respect to investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct or violations of law in accordance with Mississippi Code, annotated section 2541-7, subset 4D, specifically regarding whether the board finds there's sufficient cause to believe that an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District, and, if needed, for the discussions of discrete personnel matters related to the job performance of persons holding specific positions in the Department of Education in accordance with Mississippi Code, section 2541-7, for subsection A and K.
All right, that is the motion that we consider executive session. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, do we have a motion to enter, oh, enter into executive session?
Take it, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of, for the board to consider going into executive session for discussion and deliberations with respect to investigative proceedings regarding allegation of misconduct or violations of law in accordance with Mississippi Code, annotated section 2541-7, for subset D, specifically regarding whether the board finds there is sufficient cause to believe that an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District, and, if needed, for the discussion of discrete personnel matters related to the job performance of persons holding specific positions in the Department of Education in accordance with Mississippi Code, section 2541-7, for subsection A and K.
All right, that is the motion that we do enter into executive session. Do we have a second for that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, to make it easier on our audience, I think the board, it would be helpful if the board went downstairs to 311 and so you all can stay in here and not have to stand outside until we finish. So we'll move there now, and...
We're getting a cart brought up to bring your books down. If you want to carry your books, that's fine, but we're, we've also got a cart so that you can bring your books down. That's, you know, all books, all notebooks.
All right, back in session. We have so much paper up here, it takes a while to get everything organized. The board did enter into executive session and has properly come out of executive session, and I will announce the decisions made during that, that time. One of the things that we discussed in executive session was to determine if an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District that jeopardizes the safety, security, and educational interest of the children in the district. Whereas pursuant to Mississippi Code, annotated section 3717-612B, the State Board of Education met in a regularly scheduled meeting on September 14, 2017, to determine whether there was sufficient cause to believe an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District which jeopardizes the safety, security, and educational interests of the children enrolled in the district. Whereas the board, now therefore, the State Board of Education finds the following. The board finds that there is sufficient cause to believe that an extreme emergency situation exists in the Jackson Public School District brought on by serious findings related to serious violations of accreditation standards, federal and state law, failure to sustain a safe school climate, inappropriate standards of governance, and a continued pattern of poor performance which jeopardizes the safety, security, and educational interests of the children enrolled in the schools of this district, and which, without intervention by the State Board of Education and the Mississippi, excuse me, the Mississippi Board of Education, could result in the continuation of an inadequate and unstable educational environment, thereby denying the students of this district the opportunity to learn, to excel, and to obtain a free and appropriate education. And this was, as will be signed and notarized, and sent to the governor for his recommendation to, back to the department. The other items that we took, acted on in the executive session, we approved the approval of a bureau director, too, to serve as the statewide coordinator for JROTC. That would be Edwin Butler. We also approved the appointment of an interim superintendent for the Tunica County School District, Mr. Matt Curley. We approved the contract for the interim superintendent of Tunica County. And as a result of the adoption of the resolution regarding Jackson Public Schools, we approved the appointment of an interim superintendent, Dr. Margie Pulli, and also approved a contract for Dr. Pulli for the Jackson Public School District. Those are the items that were taken, action was taken on during the executive session. Now, we will go to our regular board meeting. In your packet, let's go... In your packet, let's go back to item nine in your.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would ask that we do a quick recess and let the room clear out.
Okay, yes, that's fine. We can take about a.
Two, three minute break.
About a five-minute recess and let everybody clear the room that needs to clear the room. Okay, let's move to item one on the agenda. Every Student Succeeds Act.
Good afternoon, Dr. Wright, Board. Over the last 21 months, Mississippi has been crafting a response to the Every Student Succeeds Act, which we'll bring forward to you today for your approval for submission to U.S. Department of Education. This plan, which we refer to in Mississippi as Mississippi Succeeds, aligns with the vision, mission, and goals of the State Board of Education and strategic plan. Focusing on educational equity for students, effective teachers and leaders, accountability for schools and districts, and academic outcomes for students from preschool through 12th grade, the plan was developed with broad stakeholder input from across the state. Engagement was ongoing and included educators, parents, community members, and local and state government officials. Feedback on the draft we brought forth to you in June focused primarily on topics such as the engagement efforts that we've made over the last 15 to 18 months, as well as the state accountability system, supports for students, family engagement, and school funding. Since your approval in June, minor edits have been made to the plan to clarify some of the accountability system alignment with federal law, not changing the model, just clarifying how we meet the federal components. Further, some responses in the plan were repositioned to improve the flow of the plan, and updates were made to more fully outline supports for at-risk populations, processes for after-school programs, and both of these were based on recent board action. After a couple of face-to-face meetings with Governor Bryant, Dr. Wright met together a couple times over the last few months. Governor Bryant spent the month of August in review of the plan. He has signed off on the plan and expressed appreciation for the hard work of the department and the stakeholders who were so actively involved in the development of the plan over the last year. I echo his sentiments, as the work's been a result of such a diverse group from across the state, and folks that have done this work have represented Mississippi well. So the plan is in your back-up. Be glad to take any questions you might have.
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Franklin, you may speak.
The ACT is in the model. It's in there as a measure of college and career readiness.
Yes, sir.
The end-of-course assessments to meet the federal.
And updates. And. Just so you know, we've got a task force that's looking at our accountability model right now. We promised the superintendents three years ago that after three years of the model, that we would pull together a task force to look at all the business rules, all the components, because we know we're going to have to change it when we add the EL component for growth and proficiency. So they're looking at all of that as we speak, and they're, it's my expectation they will bring back any recommended changes to this board so that we can have that in effect for the 18 results. That it's up to the task force that's there that's looking at it, which is superintendents, curriculum people, principals, I mean, it's everybody that's looking at it. And so I've told at the last round of my roadshows with the superintendents that the task force is up and running, and any changes that they would like to see, that they can feed into the task force for discussion.
Yep.
Governor Bryant's letter, what, did he have some things in there that he would like to see?
He was pleased to see the inclusion of the information on early childhood efforts, the work that's going on there across the state, and he was also, had mention of the work that we're doing on the workforce side with jobs for Mississippi graduates, and a lot of the work that Ms. Massey's doing in secondary ed and career tech.
Dr. Kelly?
I too want to commend Dr. Oakley and this entire team for this plan. I've had a chance to review it a couple of times. It's very good. And I guess the real affirmation.
What's the word? Affirmation?
Affirmation, for me, was several superintendents from around the country have called and commented on this plan, and said that they have been in contact with this department about how you went about putting your plan together, so. In spite of me not being able to talk, what I was trying to say. Thank you.
Any other questions on this? Thank you, Dr. Oakley. The second item is a contract with Public Consulting Group, PCG. This is to provide special education data management systems.
Good afternoon. We're coming to you today to ask for permission and approval for a comprehensive special education data management system. We have been working with the ITS department for this procurement, and with OTSS here in the House for just short of two years now. So this has been a labor of love that we are excited to finally be here at the home stretch. As we look at things, what we're wanting to introduce you to today is what we're going to call Midus, the Mississippi IEP Data Accountability System. You see that it has four distinct components that work together to lead towards greater accountability for our special education performance indicators and for results for our students. While this is an incredibly complex and detailed system, I'm going to give you just some highlights in each of these components that this system is going to do for the state. First off, it's going to provide us a statewide IEP system. This is a cost that districts have been taking on themselves. 90% of our districts have an online IEP system that they're using, but they're paying for it individually. So we are going to take that cost in at the state level, which frees up more money there at the local level for them to use for instruction and intervention. It's also going to allow within that IEP system, then, for us to easily move records from one district to another, and also, very importantly, to our JDCs when we have students who are in juvenile detention centers. We're going to be able to quickly get their records to them, which is a very important component of a lot of the work we've been doing in our detention centers. It's also going to lead to data integration, which is huge for us. There's going to be a wealth of data dashboards, Dr. Dean, and they make me happy. I look at them so nicely. But it's going to pull all that data from the actual IPs. It's also going to talk to MSIS, our state system, and it will talk to local packages such as Power School and SAM to be able to pull information directly about students, so we can get discipline data, we can get attendance data, and districts can really keep up with all of their performance indicators in real time as the year goes along. It will also produce the reports we're going to need to report federally, which we have to do annually. This is also going to be used for our monitoring in our office. We have compliance monitoring that we have to do. We have to go in and make sure those IPs are meeting all the requirements that they're supposed to have, and this is going to allow us to remotely do that. It's going to save us time, it's going to save us travel money, all of those good things, and help us kind of refocus our monitoring, where if we can get this mostly automated, then we can really move our monitoring to where it needs to be, not on have you dotted your i's and crossed your t's, but are you sitting there in, how are your results? What does the implementation look like? That leads all to compliance. We've got to make sure that we're staying in compliance. That's going to be with our indicators, through their IPs, and it's also going to help us track dispute resolution issues with parents. We're going to have our formal state complaint process in there, and we're going to be able to work with all sorts of neat pieces where we can really keep up and get a full picture of districts and how they're doing in special ed. PCG, Public Consulting Group, is, who won the procurement. It was a competitive procurement. We did this through the ITS, which we have to, because it was a technology component. No Mississippi companies applied, there was no, there were no vendors who did this. So when we came to it, we also had a review team where we brought in three individuals from local districts to help us look. We had a teacher, we had a special ed director, and we had a school psychologist to sit there and really kind of look at all the components that folks would be using, and then we, so it was about a seven-member team, with four people being from the Department of Ed and three from local school districts. So we feel all those things are going to lead us to greater accountability and greater outcomes for our students. Do you have any questions? We don't have a state system at all, so we don't have, this will be completely new for us.
Implementation of the state.
Implementation on the state level will be completely new for us. Right now, we are piecemealing our data through MSIS and through other reports that the districts have to manually send in to us, their child find report and things like that. This is going to help us where we can keep up with things much, much better throughout the year.
Congratulations. So earlier in your comments, the state already has this system, so we have this.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Questions? Thank you. The next item, item three, is to revise standard 14, Appendix A and Appendix G of the Mississippi Public School Accountability Standards relating to graduation requirements. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon. Just to remind you, we met with the commission yesterday. The commission approved this to move forward. I want to bring you up to a little bit of date as we move forward. We really began focusing on this two years ago. We began this entire process two years ago in September, when we brought the first group together of teachers and principals to look at what we wanted to do with the graduation requirements and new diploma options. We've been through last year, we went on a roadshow last year, I think we're getting real good at roadshows around here, but we went across the state, talked to principals, teachers, counselors last year, used their input, and what we brought you in July is what we're reacting to. We took this to the commission in July, we agreed in July that we would go back to the commission, once you approved it, to go out for APA. We've gone through the APA process, we took everything that was in that APA process, we looked at what was said, and I thought we brought you a good product in July, but I think we're bringing you a much better product today, based on the comments from the APA. So what I'd like to do at this time is to walk you through the comment section and what we've done with those sections to make the improvements for today, and what the commission approved yesterday. In your comment table, we, especially on just the traditional diploma, and we're going to start with that, and the comments around the traditional diploma. Some of the key areas that were in there were around early release, the college and career readiness course, early graduation, the district option diploma, ACT, SAT, and the general curriculum. We sent you all of the comments, but we took those and grouped them together in the justification sheets with the key areas were there. One of the key concerns, and we're going to start with the college and career ready course, was the timeframe for administering the course itself. In the original proposal, the proposal was that this course would be taught within one semester of graduation, which put the course, basically being the senior year. Some of our districts said that this would be a burden on them and a hardship because they had too many students to teach the senior year, which would require extra teachers. So we listened to them. We also had comments from others that said, "We're already doing a lot of this, how can we make all of these things mesh together?" And then we had districts that actually have what we call a four-course sequence, where they're doing advisory courses during all four years, or seminars during all four years. So we said, "This was never meant to be a burden to the district. This was to be able to make sure that we were teaching and we were having our kids ready to leave us." Because there was a little bit of misunderstanding around what the units would be, there's basically two parts of this course. There's the college and career, and I want you to remember that, college and career. Even if a child goes to college from high school, they're going to a career at some times. Even if they go straight to work, they're going into a career. Or if they're going for certification, it's a career. So it was very important that it was a college and career-ready units around transitioning from high school to post-secondary enrollment, from high school to work. We no longer can send a child straight to work from high school with just a high school diploma and them earn a sustainable wage. So how do we put these pieces in place? How do we help our kids explore what's out there for them? How do we help our students with the assessments that's going to get them to where they are? How do we help them plan the affordability piece? And how do we help them with the admission process to college and the admission process to get into the smart work system to earn a job? Then there were the, really, the life-ready units around financial literacy. We hear a lot about civic education. Civic education is community service. So how do we make sure our students understand that? Digital literacy. I think all of us after today and yesterday with all the live streaming, the twittering, and the Facebook, understand how it's important that our kids understand the pieces in that and what those implications are for them. And especially the communication of oral and written. So those were the key pieces in this unit, but what we found out was, we didn't have to just do this the senior year. We can actually work with our districts. It can be through those four-year-periods sequence, if they're already doing advisory periods, as long as they put in the units. What we learned yesterday from our superintendents that we talked to, that they liked, was they were already doing pieces of this, but they're having to go find their own materials to teach. Our teachers that will be coming together, if this is approved, to put these units together will be providing materials and information for our districts to use, they won't have to go find it themselves. If Gulfport High School already has a course in place that they feel meets this, they can send us an application, we'll look at their course. If they're missing financial literacy, we'll tell them how to put financial literacy in, and they can continue their course. And so we can mark the career readiness. So we really looked at this, we think that this is much better. It gives districts options in implementing, but it still gets to where we want, is our students having these skills when they leave. So we opened up the flexibility for this. The piece that will go forward, if this is done, if you approve this, what we will do next steps in November through January, we will actually bring the developmental teams together to put those, we know what the units are, but to find the materials, put those materials in place, we will bring all of that back to you as a curriculum piece with the final work into it in February. Go out and make sure that we have a good APA on the course itself, what's in there, get comments back, and bring it back to you in April for final approval. And remember, everything we're talking about are for students that are currently eighth graders, graduates of the year 21, 22. 21, 22. That sounds funny, but that's who we're talking about, are those students. But we have a number of schools that want us to go ahead and get it in place, because they want to pilot it over the next several years and put it into classes they already have. Senior project, for example, how do I take my current senior project class, put these into it, and have what I want? There is no extra endorsement, so that's not an expense. This can be, this is just one of the 24 courses, classes that's going to be required, we require 24 now. It may require that you look at what courses you're teaching, learning strategies, and this becomes the class instead of learning strategies. So we've looked at the issues of cost, endorsement, putting these in place for students over just the length of time, and giving districts flexibility. So recommendation is that we keep this course, but allowing it to be taught in multiple ways that let the district be successful in implementing it in a way that would allow them to implement it without additional cost to them. That's the college and career ready course. The second piece we looked at was early release. And our original early release was, if you're a senior and you do not meet those two benchmarks of 17 or 19, you don't have early release. We really are looking at goal number two, all kids leaving high school prepared for college and career. We had a lot of feedback on this one, and we listened. We actually had a very good, I don't want to say compromise. We actually had a very good, I don't want to say compromise, but a very good suggestion that allows us to do this and allows us still to do what we wanted to. One of our districts, that group of principals said, "You know, if I'm a senior and I need work release, and I have been able to up until that time, I'm on track to graduate, I have passed all of my four assessments or met the assessment requirements, and I will concurrently enroll in my essentials class." In other words, if I'm a senior and I made 16 on the math sub-score on my ACT, and I would like to have work release still, if during my senior year, I have to have my English, I'm in my English class, I'm in my government and my economics class, because that may be the only two things I have left, I enroll in the essentials class for my math, and I am on track to graduate because I have my four subject area tests, I could still have my work release. We're good with that, because what we're trying to do is make sure that we are looking at students and having them prepared to move forward. If I'm a career and technical student, I could use the silver on the work keys, because that's the endorsement I want, so that I could meet it through the silver on the work keys.
GPA, a little bit of heartburn too, didn't it?
It does. Let's wait till we get to the CTE endorsement, if you don't mind, because that's one of those in those endorsements. What I wanted, I'm going to get through the traditional piece, and then the pieces that went to each one of the endorsements, address those on the endorsements. So I'll get through the 2.5 and the 2.0. So we feel like this is a good piece for the early release. We also truly believe this is where we're going to start talking with kids right now in the eighth grade. Eighth graders now, in January, when we start pre-registration, they're the ones that are looking at this. If they know in the eighth grade what their requirements are, they're going to work a lot harder towards getting that early work release than they would if there was never one there. Work release should be a privilege, not a given, so that's where we're working for. So that's the recommendation for the early release. We did.
We've gone to seven-period days, we've gone to four-by-four schedules and all that stuff, and the next thing you know, you look up in three years, a kid's got 30 units, and he's saying, "Okay, I need English IV and government," but they're going to make me stay or not let me do some things that I want to do when I've got 30 units or whatever I'm using hypothetically. So we sort of created that own environment to where we're putting kids in a situation where they're looking at a senior year, not needing any much, and yet we want them to stay there all day and that kind of thing, so.
And that brings us to the next one up here. Thank you. Early graduation. There is nothing in any of these requirements that doesn't allow a student to graduate in three years. That is there now. One of the concerns, and this is not a concern, this is not an issue for graduation diplomas, this is an accountability issue. And when Dr. Wright mentioned that the Accountability Task Force was looking at all the business rules, this is one of the business rules they're looking at. The way the business rules are written for the accountability system, it says that it's based on your senior snapshot. If I graduate in three years, I don't show up in the senior snapshot, so I'm not getting the credit that I deserve for a student that graduated in three years. So that issue is being addressed, not just for this diploma, but for our students that are currently enrolled. Because if a student needs 28 credits and they have 30, and they have the 30 they need, and they're ready to go at the end of three years, then let them go. There is no rule or regulation that says students have to stay in school four years. The only thing around four years is you have to count in your four-year cohort, and if I graduate in three years, I should still count in my four-year cohort. So that's an issue to be fixed with the business rules. So yes. There then was the dog of not wanting to eliminate the 21-credit district option. And I want you all to think about something for just a minute. The 21-district option that we've allowed to be an opt-out, that option was put into place 2005, 2006. The students that would still be graduating under those 21-credit options were one-year-old when that went in place. Now you think about that, how education has changed over the years. That 21 doesn't work anymore for our students. So with the changes that you as the board approved for having graduate, for allowing students to earn Carnegie units in the middle school, which almost every child that leaves middle school now has two, eighth-grade math and technology. Most of our students exiting middle school are leaving with those two and a social studies or a fine arts or a foreign language or something. We have a lot of students that are leaving with more than two. So the 21 does no longer fit into what we need. The 24-traditional will serve what our students need. So our recommendation was not to, was to do away with that 21, and the commission agreed on that yesterday also. There was also a discussion in there, we talk about ACT all the time and ACT benchmarks, it was brought to our attention, there's SAT benchmarks too that are equal to the ACT. We want you to be ready. If you can show it on an SAT or an ACT, that's fine, so we recommend using both of those. IHL and the Community College are going to make sure that we have the right benchmarks that align with ACT and SAT. And then the last one was, there was discussion in there about only having three science credits and three and a half social studies. And I'm going to go to the next slide because I want to demonstrate something with this slide. This is the traditional diploma. You made reference to this just a moment ago, Mr. Franklin. We have districts that on a seven-period day, if I'm in high school, that means 28 credits. If I just get high school credits, you add those two from middle school, I'm all the way up to 30. I'm on a four-by-four block, that's 32 credits. You add those, that's 34, then you're up to 34. What we do with the traditional diploma, this is the minimum. This is the minimum. You as a district can go up, you can't go down. So this allows districts that are on a seven-period day, a four-by-four, or a AB block, to go up to meet the needs of what they're doing in their district, without us putting so much regulations on any one thing that a smaller district on a seven-period day suffers because we put up the recommendations up so high for those districts that have the four-by-four. So this gives the district the opportunity to raise their requirements if they see the need for it. They can't go lower, they have to go up. The second piece in this, if I raise this, I raise this for all students. I can't have a traditional and something else. I have one base traditional diploma in my district. So our recommendation for the traditional diploma is the 24 credits, leave the science and social studies as they are, because that gives the districts the opportunity to add to that, keep the college and career readiness course, but let it be taught the junior, senior year or in a four-course sequence from the ninth grade up, to give districts the opportunity to move forward. To also change, to allow the ACT, SAT, any of those to meet for that endorsement, to add that with the work keys, to make sure that you have a GPA, you passed your assessment, you're on track, and you concurrently enrolled in the essentials for college math and/or college literacy, and you select your endorsement when you come into the ninth grade. You can change your endorsement at any time, you can drop an endorsement and go for the traditional, as long as your parents are part of it. You can earn one endorsement, or you can earn two endorsements, or you can earn three if you want to, but you can earn multiple endorsements. That is the recommendation for the traditional diploma. Questions? Now, recommendation for the career and technical diploma, there were, these were the key issues around the career and technical diploma. The GPA, work keys funding, CTE dual credit, and work-based learning. Those were the four areas that there were comments mostly. The GPA, there was a recommendation to change it to a 2.0. We recommend keeping it at a 2.5. This is consistent with what's going across in other states, a 2.5 is a 75 average. I do not have to have a 2.5 to get into the CTE classes. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about to earn the endorsement. We also believe that keeping this GPA at 2.5, we have an academic of 2.5. It's not one of the other, or this kid can't have this so they can go earn this, it's their equal. The 2.5 is very attainable, we believe it's what the kids can do. It also sets a precedent in making sure that academically, our students are ready to earn those endorsements that they want. If I want to earn the NCER welding endorsement, or if I want to earn the automotive endorsement, or I want to earn the IT endorsement, I have got to have a reading level that's going to help me get there. Those type of technical manuals are written on a 12th grade or higher level, so keeping the GPA and making sure our students involve. It's important to remember too, that we're not talking about students that are going for a true CTE welding or a true CTE automotive in Algebra III. We have an advanced technical math. That is a math that our business and industry say our students need. So making sure that we are aligning the curriculum they need to be able to reach this 2.5 level. There was also a question around work keys. Work keys funding, in our Office of Career and Technical Education, with the assistance of, and this is where support comes in and it's important, our SWIV Board and all four of our workforce areas believe that this is very important and are willing to help us with funding if we need to. So we, in the Office of Career and Technical Education, will be paying for every completer to take the work keys, so this will not be a cost to the district. Then the second, the third piece was the limited availability of dual credit. There is dual credit in CTE, and we have more and more becoming involved in it, but we also have entered into an agreement with our Community College Board. If a student in high school, if I'm taking Health Science I and Health Science II, and I'm a completer, I take our high C-PASS, and I make 70 or above, all 15 of my community colleges will give me three hours of college credit. They will articulate three hours of college credit at no cost to the student. So a student can either enroll in a dual-credit course, CTE, and earn this, or they can score the articulative course and earn their dual credit through the articulation. So there's no cost there to the student or the district. And then the last piece was work-based learning. Remember that work-based learning is not a requirement for the endorsement, but we feel so strongly about this one and the work we've done with our workforce and with our SWIV Board, with the Governor's Office, with the Community College, and with IHL around apprenticeships, work-based, we actually now have in our Office of Career and Technical four people, three of them are straight out of business and industry, helping us work with business and industry across the state to gain more work-based learning experience as far as children, and also working on a very extensive externship for any K-12 teacher administrator, not CTE, any K-12, so that our teachers and educators can understand the importance of what it is in the workplace and be better satisfied for our kids. So since this is a standalone, we think it's very important to leave this one in also. So our recommendation for the endorsement is what we brought you before, because we think we answered the questions from the concerns around funding. I know that a lot wanted to drop the 2.0, but we feel very strongly about keeping the 2.5. And after the discussion with the commission yesterday, they agreed, because we had some of those same concerns. But when we finished, they agreed to come forward with the 2.5 because they felt it was important. So that's the endorsement for Career and Technical Education. Any questions on that one? Sure. I know. And if the 2.5 does not stop a student from getting into any CTE class, taking any CTE course, but what it does say, and we talked, I talked to a lot of business and industry, I've taken this to the workforce boards, I've taken it to the CREATE Board, I've taken it to the Community College, I've tried to seek the outside, we did a lot of that, we had them on the board, they really thought the 2.5, because when you look at it as a 75, was important. Now, what they said, "If I have a kid with this endorsement, and once we approve it, then we as the workforce can use this endorsement as an incentive for hiring students. And if I don't have the 2.5 and I have the traditional diploma and I've done all of this, it still gives me a leg up into that. It doesn't keep me from graduating, it still exposes me to this, it's just simply I haven't met that requirement of that endorsement."
Ms. Shaw, it didn't take away from credentialing either?
No, it doesn't.
After you were welding, whatever your credentialing was, it doesn't do what with that?
And you say, "Okay, you've got all these hurdles, but look over here." And it's like we just keep adding on and adding on, you know? And I know you say we have that in the academic side, but a lot of these kids, if they wanted to be a baccalaureate, you know, we've got more jobs open today for non-baccalaureate than we ever thought about, or the baccalaureate, and it seems like though we...
Well, every one of these were things that our business and industry said were important. To be honest with you, the silver on the work keys and the college and career-ready course was more important to them than several of the other things. The GPA was important to them, whether I made it or not, especially if I made it or I got close, it says, "You're willing to try to move forward, you're willing to try for more, and that's the person I want to hire, is somebody that's willing to go that distance." So they're really looking for, and the jobs that are out there, 60%, 66% of our jobs in the next 10 years are going to be in this level, but they're not low-paying jobs, they're high-paying jobs that are going to require more skills.
...kids for pursuing opportunities that pay far more than those baccalaurates.
And that's, I think this will do that, I really do.
Have some to tell somebody.
And that, because when I get into this program, I'm going to make better in my career and technical classes, I'm going to really work in that welding, those courses count in my GPA. They're going to bring my GPA up.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
All right, then the next concerns were around our traditional diploma. Nope. We're still getting there, Ms. Austin. Just a little bit more. Then our endorsement, these are endorsements for the academic and the distinguished, and I put these two on the same slide because the concern was the same in both. The biggest concern was around whether courses were weighted or not weighted, and having grades on one part and not the other. So I'm going to jump to this slide and then come back. We took the weighted, non-weighted out. This way, however you're figuring your GPA in your districts, you continue to do so. So doing away with the non-weighted, which they asked us to do, we said we agree. They also brought forth that if we had a requirement of C for dual credit and we weren't having a requirement of a grade for AP or IB, those were higher-level courses, we needed to make sure mastery was the same across. So for the academic, it's a C on each one, for the distinguished, it's a B in each area, with the non-weighted gone. Then the next piece was around funding, the funding of AP, IB, all of these. For students of low income, students that needed, there are waivers for this through the College Board. There's also federal funding from Title I, Title IV Part A. ESSA permits us to use this for a well-rounded. One of the ideas people were talking about earlier was all of the training that needs to be done. I will tell you that as soon as, hopefully, when you vote on this, if you approve this, we will be sending out to all of our districts 14 different trainings that will begin two weeks from tomorrow. We are requiring that the district send a middle school counselor, a middle school principal, a high school counselor, and a high school principal from every feeder pattern, with a special ed teacher or special ed coordinator and someone from the district. We have an entire day planned of going through all of this with them. We have materials ready and a website ready for them to use with parent guides, student guides, fillable PDF documents that you can keep up with all of this that a district can use. We have a tremendous amount of materials ready to go. So as soon as we finish and it's approved, we will be doing this training all the way across the state, full-day training. Full-day training of how to implement, how to work middle school, high school. As soon as we finish with that piece, Dr. Oakley and Dr. Smith have elementary trainings for three days. We have a portion in that because this starts in elementary. And so we'll be moving it all the way down there. Once we finish that, we will also have additional training for our counselors based on what they tell us from the training they still need. So we have lots of plans between now and December to be completely finished with that. Why by December and why so important to move forward? Pre-registration begins in January. And that's with those ninth-grade students that would be involved.
About asking the legislature to fund. We're going to make that a part. Constitution says we're supposed to offer a free public education?
There, there, there...
I know that's accelerating above, but I mean, if we're making a graduation...
Yeah, there's a lot of legislatures in the United States that are putting aside large pots of money for just exactly what you're talking about.
I mean, that's a part of a graduation, if you want that endorsement. I realize you can say if you want, but I mean, really and truly, if we're going to say that's a part of our graduation truck.
And the way they've done it is they've, they've put the money aside and then allow the districts to draw down with saying, I've got 10 kids that are doing this, and then they draw down that money. So it is being done around the United States.
Hate to see any child or any parent out there that having to end up on doing things that we say, okay, if you want this, you know, you got...
Well, and you raise a really good point because we've been trying to work with community colleges to kind of get on the dime about even leveling the costs for courses, and they're not moving. So you've got some, the range is still 50 to 450. And so if I'm the parent that can afford the 450, then that's great. But if I'm the parent that's not, because the other part, as you well know, that whatever, just whatever community college you are, is your catchment area. So I've got this little community college over here that has, only charges $50. But if I don't reside in that catchment area, I cannot, even if my kid has a car, to get over to this community college, take that class in that community college. I can only be accepted in the community colleges, my catchment area. So there's a lot of these little funky rules that I think that we need to look at. And if not, I do think we need to talk to the legislature about leveling the playing field. I agree.
And we've asked, but with the budget, we just haven't gotten any extra funds. Hopefully, things will settle out and it will come back to us because we, we agree with you, this is very important. So, and then, one of the concerns that was in the comments was around, what if I already have an existing honors graduate program? This is no different from the traditional. You can go above this endorsement if you have additional. For example, one of our commission members yesterday, in his district, you have to take five A P courses to be distinguished. That's fine. That's above what we have. You can't go below. You can go above. We had to set a starting point because there are a lot of districts that haven't started any of this. So that's our recommendation for the academic endorsement. We changed the Cs and the grades. We'll add S A T to this. Same thing with distinguished. We took out the non-weighted and added the Bs. And we have the S A T or the A C T in this. So that's our recommendation for the distinguished endorsement. Then the alternate diploma and the certificate of attendance. I'll tell you, and we'll get to the certificate and attendance in a moment. That was our biggest area of concern. You're not even being asked to vote on that today. We have totally pulled that, and I'll get to that slide in a minute. But that piece is not even in the, in the discussion for today. We'll talk about that in a moment. The alternate diploma was our diploma for our S C D students. The, we had no comment back really on this. Everybody's really excited that they now have an opportunity for students that with S C D rulings to really be able to count, to earn this diploma and count in the accountability system. The one area that we did look at, and you see it highlighted, that was a score of three. But because there are changes going on right now with the alternate MAP Assessment A, we're not sure what the different levels will be. As soon as that's decided, what the levels are in the cutoff, we'll bring back this for you to approve a score to go in here. But we don't have a score right now. Okay? And then...
Practitioners out there will appreciate, I think they will appreciate that you're listening to.
We took very...
The idea, I want, I just want to, this one piece Gretchen, you can throw an apple at me. The idea of every child being able to do a diploma, this won't be your first time to hear that out of me. I'm glad y'all are revising that because that's a problem.
And so they did, there was discussion around, I'm just trying, I'm, y'all have been here a long time. I'm trying to get through this quickly. We've been, the MOD diploma, the Mississippi Occupational Diploma, you've already voted from Mississippi Code 371611 to end that. We're not bringing the occupational diploma back. So that one's gone. But then, this was what you're talking about, certificate of attendance. The big piece was around the age 20. We had not defined this out and gone far enough. So our plan is, you'll see all of the items, we pulled this. You're not voting on what certificate of attendance or certificate of completion or whatever this ends up being called. You're not voting on that today. We've looked at all of, we know these are areas that we need to address because these were areas that were brought out in the public comment. Our plan is, as we go across the state with these 13, 14 regional meetings, we will be getting comments back from the individuals that come to the planning of their ideas. Gretchen will have together a task force of special ed that will actually be looking at all the recommendations we bring in.
And general ed.
And general ed. They will then, from there, look in December of taking a recommendation back to the Commission around this certificate. And then they will bring that to you in January, go out for A P A at that point in time, hopefully to finalize by March. I think it's very important to point out, as Gretchen said this morning, there is certificate of attendance in place now. That doesn't change. So we're looking at how we make it better.
I've got a letter, and I'm assuming everybody here got a letter from an advocate, talking about when the law was passed, doing away with MOD, it said that that wouldn't come about until we had voted on this. And yet y'all are out saying to everybody, there's no MOD anymore and all this, that and the other, and that's not the way the law was fit. Is that accurate or...
It says upon, upon board approval, but it also, it did eliminate the MOD for incoming ninth graders. The law did do that. It was talking about what is going to replace it. What you are seeing here, the certificate of attendance is not replacing the MOD. And I want to be very clear about that. We do not need another dumping ground. And so, no. So what you see now in front of you are the, the traditional, the C T E endorsement, the academic endorsement, the distinguished endorsement, and the alternate diploma. Those are your basic diplomas. This certificate does not qualify for a diploma. And we're going to have to be very careful about how we identify who gets this certificate. Because the last thing I want is some of the anecdotes that we've been hearing, which are I E P teams meeting a week before graduation and changing a child from a traditional diploma to something else in order to not have to worry about graduation. So my concern, which was my concern about the MOD, which is the reason I pushed so hard to have it eliminated, is that we were, it's not, we're doing anything for anybody right now at all. And it's useless. You know, we, community colleges are using it. Business isn't using it. Military isn't accepting it. Nobody's accepting it as a diploma. So we have to come up with something that, that gives the ability for our special ed children to earn a diploma. And the majority of our kids, the majority of our children, there's no doubt in my mind, can earn a traditional diploma. No doubt. S C D, that's another population. Those are the kids that are significantly cognitively involved. But all this other group of special ed kids? Absolutely. With the right instruction, starting in elementary school, these children can earn a traditional diploma.
That's correct.
Absolutely. Right. It's got to be general ed and special ed working hand in hand. Sure.
And I think that's what you're telling me. We're trying to give those folks something of value.
That's exactly right.
Yes, sir.
That's exactly right.
That was it.
Our intent.
We, we do believe that, and that's why we really believe we go back and look. But I think it's very important, as Dr. Wright said, we do it right. Because we don't...
Violation of the law.
No, sir.
No, no, no.
No, sir.
Everybody get that same letter?
Yes, yes, I did, I did.
So basically today, what you'll be voting on is making sure that we make the revisions to Standard 14 in our Public School Accountability System that gives us those four, the A, A1 through A11. And then to make sure that our new accountability system reflects this for incoming eighth graders. So that's what you're voting on today and talking about. Any other questions?
And all this goes into play 1819.
1819.
Entering ninth graders for 1819.
Yes. Everybody that's currently in the system completes under what they're in. We took it very seriously, Mr. Franklin.
Did take it very seriously.
These ladies are...
Oh, yeah.
So much credit because they have been on the road for the past 18 to 20 months, listening to stakeholders. With over 1,000 responses that informed what you saw today and then still getting better at it and listening to the voices. That was something the commission members noted yesterday that they could see clearly that we paid attention to the public comment and that public comment really matters.
I've been following this, but since 15. It turns me that, that I don't see you changing it. So I think when she sees it now.
She will.
All right, thank you, ladies. The next item, we are on item five. I mean, I'm sorry, item... The new six, yeah. Not a confusing agenda today. We've jumped around so much. Information on A C T.
Yes, ma'am. What we'd like to do is take the next few minutes and walk you through the A C T scores for two groups of students. Our 11th graders, our juniors who completed the A C T, and then the graduating class of 2017. So you're going to, sets of metrics. We administer the A C T and have for the past, that's okay, for the past three years. And while it touches on multiple goals of the State Board, it most closely aligns with the second goal, which is that every student graduates high school-ready for college and career. Just to highlight a few key components of the A C T, which many of you are aware of, the A C T assessment is designed to be a predictive measure of college readiness. It's not a content performance measure. There are a number of components that, and analyses that we get back when we administer both the 11th grade A C T and to seniors and other students. We receive sub, sub test scores for English, mathematics, reading, which is called social sciences as well, science, and a composite score. In addition, we see, receive results around the college readiness, national college readiness benchmark scores. And I'll talk a little bit more about those in a moment. Students are able to indicate their career interest, what they're interested in, and then how that A C T score aligns, that they receive aligns with what would be needed for that particular career pathway. And then students self-report their course-taking patterns. That's a really important piece, and I'll speak more to it at the end. So we can see the course sequence that seems, seems to correspond to higher results on the A C T. A C T scores come in two forms that we'll be talking about. The scale score, which you are familiar with. It's on a range of 1 to 36. We'll look at those composite scores in just a moment. And we also will be talking about benchmark scores. When we talk about, we've heard Jean talk about benchmark marks scores for A C T that are different from the ones that I'm going to be talking to you about. Those scores that she indicated are what our Mississippi Institutions of Higher Learning and Community College require for entry into credit-bearing courses. This particular benchmark, if you look at the little chart that's there, if you look at the English, there's an English A C T test mark, benchmark at the national level of 18. What that 18 means is that if a student enrolls in English composition, there is a 50% chance of that student earning a B or higher in English composition, if they earned an 18. A 75% chance of them earning a C or higher in that English composition. And that's what that means all the way across. The same for reading with the 22, mathematics with the national benchmark of 22, and science of 23. And then on the left, you see that corresponding, or to my left, that corresponding college-level course. So what I'm going to do now is talk and give you the sets of metrics that I want to share. Two different groups of students, two different outcomes for assessments. The 11th grade results for our juniors and then the graduating class. So if you'll bear with me as I go through this presentation, you'll see some different, you maybe have questions that arise, but if you'll bear with me through the end, I think you'll see how the pieces fit together. Okay? So let's look first at our results over a three-year period for our 11th grade students. On this chart, as you look across that first line, you'll see the number of students tested across a three-year period. This year, we have 1,400 more students in 11th grade that were tested in the spring in comparison to the previous spring. That represents a 5% increase in students. When you have increases in students participating, you will see fluctuations in scores from time to time. That's something we've discussed with our TAC. And I'll speak again more to that in just a moment. But you'll also see that our score, there was a fluctuation and a dip. Our juniors this year had a composite score of 18.0 in comparison to the previous year of 18.3. Now, if you think about why we administer the A C T at the junior level, that's to give us meaningful information to inform that senior year. So as I move to the second set of data, you'll see how these pieces fit together. Our, our goal each year, when we look at our 11th grade students, is to see, okay, what did Kim score as an 11th grader? Where were my deficits? Where were my strengths? What courses can I enroll in as a senior to ensure that I have more content that I'm exposed to to position me for a higher score and better outcomes on the A C T? Also want to point out that, I think this is really important to note, that we had 23 schools that had an average junior A C T of 21 or higher. That's, that's significant. 21 schools for juniors? Just think about, they have another year. They have another year in school. And that 21 is important because 21 is the national A C T average composite for students exiting high school. Yes, sir? The PowerPoint? No, so you don't have that, but I'll be happy to give that for you.
We'll email it to you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, heart, sorry, we'll copy it for you.
I'll, I'll get it for you today.
Send it by pigeon.
I can get it for you today. All right, so Walt, if you'll go back to the next slide on the benchmarks. So as I stated, you had more students you tested. You had a fluctuation in your 11th grade score. If you had a dip there, you would likely see a dip in your benchmarks, the percentage meeting benchmarks. And we did. You had 10% that met all four benchmarks. And as you look across the columns, the blue represents the 11th graders, our baseline year, that were administered in the spring of 2015. The green, the juniors in the spring of 2016. And then the yellow, the juniors in the spring of 2017. So while you see 10% met all four benchmarks this year, which was a decrease of 1%, you still know that for all four, it's higher than it was during that baseline administration. And you see that across all the content areas with exception of our English composition, where we maintained that, that growth there of the performance at 41%. So when we saw this, anytime you see a dip, regardless, you start, it gets your, your lights flashing. You know, you're cautionary, lights flashing. What do you, what do you put in place? What's going on? How did we get these scores? We do know more students tested. And of course, with our Technical Advisory Committee that met just a few weeks back, Mr., this is a joint item between Office of Assessment and Curriculum, Mr. Drains brought that up to our TAC, our Technical Advisory Committee. And what they shared was, when you have fluctuations in data at two different... And what they shared was, when you have fluctuations in data at two different points in time, that doesn't make a trend. You pay attention to it and make sure that you are very intentional with the support you put in place, so that that doesn't become a trend. And that's exactly what we're doing with that. So let's move to our 12th grade results, our results for our graduating class. When you look at these numbers, it's a three-year comparison also, 2014-15, over the three years through our spring administration. And these are our graduating seniors. You notice immediately an increase in the number of students that's been tested. And if you look at the 2014-15 year to 2016-17, that represents an increase of 6,700 students. That's 6,700 students that probably didn't even think that they could take the ACT, because they may not have had the financial resources to do that. No one maybe had ever saw that ability in them or thought they would do well on the assessment, and they were afforded that opportunity. So that's an important thing I'd like to lift out to you. And then also, if you will notice, from last year's graduating seniors to this year's graduating seniors, you do see an increase. You see an increase across your English subtest from 17.9 to 18.2, math, 18 to 18.1, reading, 18.7 to 18.8, science, 18.5 to 18.8, and your overall composite from 18.4 to 18.6. So what that suggests to me is that the interventions and supports that are taking place in the senior year are having an impact. And again, I'll speak more to that in just a moment. You may have seen an article that was released from SREB in the past week or so that listed Mississippi and Maryland as... Yes, Mississippi and Maryland. It's two states that had made progress and inroads in narrowing the achievement gap on ACT for subgroups of students, particularly between white students and black students. We are pleased to have been recognized on that national level, but we are not satisfied by any stretch with where we are with that subgroup piece. And you will, I'll address that in our strategies that we are pursuing into next year. But we're pleased that we're moving in the right direction. As you look at the benchmarks, you see an increase in performance this year from where we have meeting all four, 12%. And then if you go backwards, we have 47% in English composition, 20% in college, meeting the college algebra benchmark, social sciences 29%, and 20% in biology. And that's meeting the national benchmark. And you remember, I told you that we have another set of benchmarks that we also look at in Mississippi, and that's what will grant children entry into credit-bearing courses. And we are seeing steady increases there as well. More students are qualifying for entry into IHL. More students are earning scholarship dollars because of that. And I want to share a number with you. When you look at that 12%, when I told you there were 6,700 on the previous slide, more children that had the ability to take ACT, I want to put some numbers to those percentages. When you look at the year, spring 2015, May 2015, that 13% meeting all four benchmarks represented about 3,800 students. The 11% in the spring of 2016 was 3,900 students. This year, the 12%, because we continued to test more students, equated to approximately 4,300 students. So that's more students being better prepared, meeting goal two, that we strive for every day in the work we do, supporting your goal to ensure that they're more prepared for college and career. So what are we doing to make sure that our 11th grade data doesn't become a trend of a dip? And more importantly, more of our seniors are exiting high school equipped. We recognize that real change takes place at classroom and school level. So Ms. Massey, her secondary team, Ms. Kegel, and in working with partnership with Community College and IHL, will continue to provide regional trainings to build the capacity of districts to address the achievement gaps among subgroups. We look at the data. We see the discrepancies. When we have trainings, we don't just stand and show them a PowerPoint like I'm doing today. We have the teams that Jean described that come to the trainings. And what they do is dig into their own data. You've heard Dr. Wright say this many times about putting a face to the numbers. That's what we ask them to do. Look at your students that are not being successful. Look at these two students. What's their course-taking pattern? What did Mr. Drane have access to that I didn't or that Dr. Vanderfor didn't? So that's one of our strategies. We're also happy to report, because of the passage of the board's board item a few months ago, that beginning in 18-19, we will have Essentials for College Math and Essentials for College Literacy offered in every high school in the state. Many of our high schools already have taken the lead and have implemented that. Training's been going on for the past two years. Last year, Mississippi schools that participated were part of a research study by SREB. And what they found was, students that enrolled in the SREB courses, which are now our Essentials for College Math and Essentials for College Literacy, scored anywhere from 1 to 3 points higher on those subtest scores, and the overall average was 2.2. That's a positive return on investment. That's what we want to see, because again, that qualifies students for entering to credit-bearing courses. If they earn a C in this course, they immediately go into it. There's just lots of benefits that that translates to. We continue to work with our districts around the classroom instruction, making sure that it's aligned to the standards. We are sharing resources that are available. It will be available at no cost to districts. We continue to talk to our counselors and principals about giving opportunities to children to have rigorous coursework. The new diploma options that were just passed will be an incentive and something that we'll be working with our schools on. It's very important that we work with our middle and high schools. Jean alluded to this earlier. We know that the opportunity to earn those endorsements will not happen if things don't change in the elementary and middle school. So we'll be working there. There are new ACT accommodations that will be available late this fall for students, English learners. That ties back to the item that Dr. Oakley presented around how our English learners will be in our accountability model and our report card. And so now we're making sure that they are afforded all the accommodations that they deserve. And then lastly, and this one, I do want to give you a number with, informing students of the ACT fee waiver. We talk about equity and making sure that children have that opportunity. We know that if students have the opportunity to retest on the ACT from that junior year, what ACT has reported to us, there typically is a 3 to 4-point increase just by having the opportunity to retest. Last year in Mississippi, over 23,000 students exercised and received an ACT fee waiver. When you look at how much it cost last year to take the ACT, $42.50. 42.50 times that 23,000 was over $900,000, that that saved students and families across the state. So we're committed through these strategies to work hand in glove with our districts to make sure that they are equipped to support their students. Graduating seniors, 83% of Mississippi students said they want to go to college. They want a post-secondary experience, and we want to ensure that that happens for them. Questions?
I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but like I brought up about the ACT, the reason we did ACT, college and career ready. If we don't have kids ready, C plus a gift to college and university, we don't have a good job. The workforce, the future. Have something that incentivizes districts to make ACT and the preparation for that. And that may be what you were trying to tell me earlier, Dr. Wright, with the task force. You know, we need to figure out how to incentivize otherwise for districts to utilize the ACT.
That's correct. And we take the challenge, we accept the positive, and we accept the challenge of knowing we have lots of work to do, and we are committed to making sure that good things happen for the boys and girls in Mississippi. Yes, sir?
Thank you for your report. That's good news. We are now to consent agenda. Item A, you want to...
Dr. Gavin? You want to come?
Yeah, I got it, Mark. Yeah.
Question on item A. Mr. Franklin?
Steadily bringing these folks in and all that, and I know these folks that fall under that category are not selected.
You're talking about item A?
A under the consent agenda.
Contract.
That particular individual's working at the school for the blind?
Right.
Yes, and we did advertise that. She did apply.
Accreditively awarded. Okay.
All right, the next... Did that answer your question? Item B was to modify the contract with CLA, that's the audit firm.
They came in at, I think, $97,000. And since that time, we've upped them. To do a shadow audit, we gave them 114. And now we're going to give them another big block of money. And it's like, people come in and they get here, and then we just keep adding or keep redoing contracts and that type of thing, you know?
Let me just say, before we get started, I want you to explain this. This is courtesy of the Office of the Auditor. So the auditor is requiring us to do audits that they could do for free, and they are requiring us to hire this firm to do it. No, what you have right in front of you, the federal programs and the single audit. So they basically told us, you got to do it, this is who's doing it, and move forward. When they could come in and do this for free.
And it's not, it's the same audit as last year. The only addition is the MAP, they're doing that, and that's an additional 5,600. So it's not anything additional, other than the amount for the MAP that's different from last year. These are the same audits that they conducted last year with the addition of MAP.
Right, but they conducted the audits last year.
They conducted the MAP audit last year.
Now, right, and now they're requiring an outside firm to do that on our dime. Just saying.
Okay, I think C was fine, the accredited non-public status for Mill Creek. Then D is to revise State Board Policy Rule 36-5, dual enrollment with armed services.
Paul Asfath?
Paul Vander... Okay.
Or Jean, either one of you?
Neither one. It's to clarify the option that's already there. Was to use dual credit in place. We, some schools are trying to use media land or media English to clarify what the English land is. We have another group that were trying to use a pre-ASFAD for the ASFAD to clarify only the ASFAD we use. It's just clarifying what's already in place.
What's my concern is, I think, you've heard me say, you know, I think those end-of-the-course tests are obsolete.
It's not advertising, it's like, it's clear of what you can use in the options.
All right. E is discretionary grant to Rankin County School District. You're all right. F is people trans... Oh, excuse me. You okay? I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? Is this the same thing that we've been doing over the years where we get Rankin County to come? And this money is reimbursing Rankin County? And Rankin County pays the salary of that person? Okay.
F is the pupil transportation equipment bids.
Paul, it's under Paul.
I wanted to make sure Dr. Welch is here.
Burroughs, the big, got most of them. Are these Mississippi outlets? I know Waters Truck Company's in Columbus. Got Columbus too. I don't know about... But I didn't know, Burroughs got a lot of the business here. And I didn't know about that.
Okay, and the last one is temporary accredited status for Brentwood. You okay with that one? Okay. If we, when we vote, are you comfortable voting for a consent agenda motion? Are you... Huh? No? Okay. All right. Then we'll vote independently. Okay. All right, let's... Are we ready to vote? Under the Office of Chief Academic Officer, do I have a motion to approve item one?
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Under the Office of Chief Academic Officer and the Office of Technology and District Transformation, do I have a motion to approve item two? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under the Office of Chief Accountability Officer, do I have a motion to approve item three?
Remove.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Under the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve item A?
Remove.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Franklin? Under item B, do I have a motion to approve the contract modification with Clifton Larson Allen, LLP?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, Mr. Franklin and Mr. McClellan. Item C is approval of the accredited non-public status for Mill Creek Cosiesco. Okay, we have a motion. Second? Mr. Franklin, will you take a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Under, on item D, this is to revise State Board Policy Rule 36-5, dual enrollment in armed services vocational aptitude battery requirements. Motion to approve?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item E is to modify discretionary grant to the Rankin County School District for an educator in residence. Motion to approve? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
F is approval of pupil transportation equipment bids. Have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? G is approval of accredited temporary status for Brentwood Crosswood School. Motion to approve that? Or a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We... Okay. Can I handle these other two things? Do we have, do we have anyone who needs permission to attend any meetings, out-of-state meetings before? Okay. Our next board meeting will be, our next regular board meeting will be on October the 19th, 2017, at 10 o'clock in this room. All right, I think that's it, but the attorney has something to...
I just, I've advised that we go into executive session, so I need a motion for executive session.
Chairman, I move the board consider making a closer determination of the need to go into executive session.
You have a second to that?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion that we enter executive session?
Chairman, I move the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussion with respect to investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct or violation of law in accordance with Mississippi Code Section 254174, subsection B.
You have a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay.
The leadership team is all that needs to stay.
Couldn't take but a minute.
And you'll have call-in capability?
Yes, we will have phone capability for those of you that'll be out of town. Okay. We will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all.